I guarantee you.
It was across.
Oh, it could be.
That's what it said.
A niece. Could be a niece.
Well, Melanie, so I assume you were in on this. Because when my dad died in February, he wrote this song way back when, when I was a kid that went to the state, the Wyoming State Song. And it was one of three finalists. And at his funeral, we all sang it. There was this huge, we all. So Melanie had, it was, I'll look at it, his name, across him. She did a painting of the red cliffs. Inside a buffalo and the buffalo has the word and he is beautiful. And I thought for sure you were. Did every morning.
No, just say yes.
Okay, yeah, you're affiliated in some way. I'm just sure.
He, like uncle.
Her children down. Oh, okay. Maybe.
We get on.
Yeah, because she, maybe because.
End of recording.
Red clips, what she did, I mean, it was neat. It was really beautiful. Yeah, I'll, I will, I'll show it to you.
Okay. But you ready? Okay, let's get started. We'll call this meeting to order at six oh four. For the Sublet County Planning and Zoning Commission, Thursday, November twentieth. Start with a roll call.
Tammy Crossen, present.
Chase Harbor, present.
Good, Red S. Mashad, present.
Chris Lacinic, present.
Wow, this.
Okay, and then next we have two sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with October sixteenth.
Can I just motion to approve both at the same time?
I don't think we're probably not.
I'm going to abstain from the last one because I wasn't here.
Oh, let's do it one at a time.
Okay.
I'll motion to approve the minutes.
Was that the one? I was absent that one, so I'll abstain on that.
So, yeah, it's pray best. I was good at that. We're all at all of them.
I know.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from October sixteen, two thousand twenty five.
Okay, we have emotions or second?
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I. I.
You were at that one.
Oh, abstain. No, the October, which one?
The October sixteenth, you were there.
Oh, it was right. I, yes.
Okay. And then we've got the November sixth, which that's the one you were abstaining.
I will motion to approve the minutes from November sixth.
Okay.
I will second it.
All right, all in favor?
I.
I.
I'll abstain.
Okay.
Get that.
I'm getting it.
Do you like me to write that down for you? I shouldn't mess it up.
Yep. I think so. Clayton, can I sign something that I abstained from? All right. That's what I thought. It has been ratified. Okay. All right. First item, I think, or only item of business. On the agenda today is the double J ranch zone change request from A one to RR. Uh, this is requesting to create a three acre subdivided parcel. Want to give us an overview?
And. It are to the west of Daniel on Highway eighty four. And this parcel is approximately a hundred and ten acres. And the goal is to rezone this from A one. And to also do a minor subdivision to create a three acre residential, rural residential parcel. This was originally part of a parent parcel. And it was divided off by deed, so it was originally part of this. And. You are allowed to do the division by deed if it is over thirty five acres and not do the by minor subdivision. So that does not disqualify this from the minor subdivision. I just wanted to share that with you, though, that that was part of a personal. Now I figure out what you mean. Okay. And the proposed law is up here. We did send notices to the neighbors about this meeting. We received no comment back from any of the neighbors. We reached out to, in the, in the application, I'll let, I'll let applicants speak more of this. But we did get quite a bit of feedback. Conservation District did a review. They received feedback from the City Engineers Office from. I think pull up that. There is the.
Chris, would you mind turning that a little?
All right.
Just so I can see it a little bit in case I can't.
Yes.
Can you still see?
Does that work for you?
Just in case I can't find.
This is the south part. Sorry, Johnny, I have to click on. Damon Fish. Um, one thing that fit, that has come up just through questions from people previous to this meeting was about the percolation test. And from talking with Mike Jackson and all at Mike's feet to this a little bit more, but, but Mike and I talked about this. Um, the thought was because this was a minor subdivision in its three acres. It's unknown at the time exactly where the leach field is going to go. And typically a percolation test is always required with the septic. And there was another percolation test for a residence that's near here. And it is feasible to do a septic system in this location. The groundwater is, is high. The groundwater, the conservation district estimated it's twenty seven inches. But to know where the exact groundwater is, it's recommended to do that during peak irrigation season versus doing it this time of year. Um, all at Mike's feet to that a little bit more, but that was just something that we had during our discussions. And I wanted to bring that up just to be open based on. Yeah, if something does need to happen between now and. Potentially the commissioner's meeting, there is a little bit. Mike, if you guys want to have the floor, let me actually share the subject, show, show. The plot and you can see up on this northwest corner is the three acres with a forty foot access. Please move it to get on.
Good evening, Mike Jackson, through over to engineering for the record. Uh, thanks Haley. I think one, one clarification is that the, the rezone is for just the three acres, not the entire parcel and stuff. Um, yeah, regarding the, the perk tests, you know, I, I, I do know that that is, that's in the. Part of the requirements. And my thought process on that is it's in there to look at feasibility that you can design something for a system. Um, just from looking at, you know, other permits in the area, um, just knowledge of irrigation meadows like that. I mean, I know we can do it. Um, the other thing is because of the seasonally high groundwater is probably a lot bigger factor than the perk rates. Um, and something like this, mostly from a cost perspective to the developer, you know, somebody wanted to do a. Single residential house, you know, it's not a big system. So, you know, if they're slower perk rates, the, the, the beds are a little bit bigger. The, the leach fields, the absorption systems. Um, but the, the seasonally high groundwater should be measured generally in July, you know, early July, when the irrigation's on. That way you're, you're being conservative. That's what we, we tend to do in these areas, these bottom areas. So. I talked to Haley about that. Um, early on with our, in our pre, pre-application meeting, she agreed, you know, depending on what the, what you all feel, you know, that's something we can definitely get done before the commissioner's meeting. If it's a, if it's a sticking point. Um. The other thing, I'm just talking about, you know, the, the feedback from the agencies. We intend on adding the note for wildlife friendly fencing to the plat, the face of the plat. That's one thing that they're definitely on board for. Probably still need to have fencing because it's, it's in an agricultural ranch setting, you know, probably don't want to have cows in their yard. So it's a pretty small, pretty small area. Uh, looked at water in the area. So we, there's plenty of setbacks for, for wells, septic systems, for a single residential house. Um. The only other, you know, notable feedback was from Y dot. I discussed this. I think you've seen in that packet with Darren Kaufman in Rock Springs. And he recommended we use the existing field access that's there off the highway. So we centered that, used that right up with a field access. Once this, you know, we want to make sure that this will be approved before we went that route. But basically you just submit, he, I mean, he's, he's aware of what we're doing. And we would just reclassify that, um, access as, you know, for residential use versus a field access. And it meets all the spacing requirements. So. Um, I can speak to any other questions you might have regarding the project. We do have the applicants in the room. JJ Healy is the owner. Um. And then why, and we heard the perspective purchasers, they, they're the ones that want to live there. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
How are you, Mike?
Good.
Um, what about a, uh, where they're going to develop the home? There's, I mean, a lot along with the septic, usually you have a development site.
Mm hmm. Where, where is it?
Yes, in the three acres. Where would it be?
It would be in towards the north, uh, the northwest corner. I mean, there's, if you, if you go on site, the southeast corners kind of got a, I guess you would call it a. It was def, it's definitely a lateral. It's a ditch lateral. Looking at aerial photos from back in the fifties forward, it looks to me like maybe some of web draw actually feeds that now. But it's not classified as a, as a stream, but in that wet area, you obviously want to have your setback. I mean, it's a lower area. So for foundation, septics, everything, it's better just to kind of stay on the high ground.
Have we even talked about floodplain and wetlands and some of those requirements as far as there's really. We can turn, I can turn on those layers just so everybody. Right, I'm. Oh, how am I not?
I'm used to that.
Which anything, any construction within a floodplain requires an elevation certificate. That's just common in county. And really the wetlands are minimal. And if, if it is. Is any impact with wetlands, it would require the.
Reconstruction notification.
Construction notification, thank you.
Yeah, or, yeah. Um. Um, I'm blanking. It's a jurisdictional, it may be non-jurisdictional too, but either way, it's, it's a small amount.
I've got a question if I can. Um, well, I have a couple of things. One is on the, on the perk test, it's just we're. I appreciate the rationale and it, it sounds reasonable on many fronts, but. Where it puts us in a bit of a pickle because what the, uh. regs say is that if either lot is to include an individual on lot sewage system, which that is the case. The application shall include results of the application. Which we have as part of this shall include results of a percolation test. And it goes on. So there's, it's not if, or maybe, or it's, it's shall, which means we, it has to happen. Uh, and if we, if we were to sit here tonight and say, okay, well, that sounds reasonable, which, which it does. But we're going to ignore the regs then, like, we don't have ground to stand on later if, if, you know, it's a different scenario and a different person. And then we look biased. We're going to treat one person differently than another. So for that reason, I mean, I think it, I think it would be a reasonable compromise. And it sounds like there's some willingness to do this to just, if, if this moves forward, to just condition it on before the BOCC meeting, doing the perk test, just that. We're not, we're not, you know, throwing our duties out the window of not following the regulations, which is our, pretty much our sole job. So that, that's one consideration. The other question, Clayton, this might want to, this, you may weigh in on this. I don't, I'm confused by what to make of like. So the regs talk about basically a lot can only be split once. So here we have a hundred and ten acre lot. We're doing a minor subdivision into a three acre lot, but that leaves a hundred and seven acres, which is exempt from anything having to do. So you could do, still do subdivisions up to thirty five acre lots, right? So it just, how, how, how do you then interpret? I don't know how to reconcile those two things. That seems very.
So you know what's kind of, you know, what's kind of fun here? Is that, yeah. Actually grew up in that house right there.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Hey, that is, that is the best lot. That is the best lot in Sublet County, surrounded by ranchland. There's no neighbors. It's great. So, um, and I've been trying to get an option on that house, but I need to get Ben on board. Um. So actually I'll tell you guys a funny story first before we go, just because I want to, and I've got the microphone and I can. So in the old days around Sublet County, hey, your beer looks really good tonight, Chase. Anyway.
You're in show mode tonight, huh, buddy?
No. Is it going in the minutes? Come on, this will be fun. So in the old days in Sublet County, before we had the, uh, oil and gas boom. On the north end of the county, there weren't that many welders around, but every ranch hand, every ranch in the county has a two twenty welder plugged into the wall. And every rancher, when they, when the. When the rake decides to throw a tine or whatever it may be, Dobbs on there and tries to fix it up. My old man was a pipeline welder. He worked down in the barge. He'd drive down every day from there. And when things would really go wrong, they'd give him a call and say, Mike, we tried to fix it. We can't fix it. Come fix it. And so I remember out in that field, my job was to, in the middle of hanging season, stamp out the fires while he was welding on, on the hanging equipment. So. Is that okay? That was that, was that story that I told? Okay. So think of exemptions. So. The agricultural divisions are an exemption from the subdivision requirements. So you can do as many of those as you want. So frankly, these guys.
Thirty five acres or greater.
Thirty five acres or greater, so long as the leftover pieces are thirty five acres. So this is not an agricultural subdivision because it is not resulting in at least two thirty five acre lots at the minimum. So this is not an agricultural subdivision. That's why it has to be a minor subdivision. But yes, they can go back through. They can cut that under as many thirty five acre pieces as are logistically possible with the nature of the property. And that's exempt by statute and by the regulations. So since it's an exempt action, it doesn't count as a division for the purposes of only one division. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So this lot, I guess, if, not that it would, but if this three acre lot were to be sub, it could not be subdivided.
It could not be subdivided. Plus it's three acres. You can't cut three acres into, you know.
The larger tract is just exempt from.
Correct. But had they cut this into a ten acre piece, for example, and then the landowners wanted to come through and cut the ten acre piece in half. That would have to go through the major subdivision requirements.
Okay.
There would be everything else.
Got it. Thank you.
You clarified that.
Your story was longer than the explanation.
Well, this story was much more entertaining.
It goes, if, if this were, if this is approved. This property could still, thirty five acres could still be sold with this property, even though the minor subdivisions. Uh, occurred, thirty five acres could be deeded off.
Yeah. So right now it's like, what, one, it's like one ten? That actual chunk itself is one ten. So you cut off the three. So you got a hundred and seven left. You know, whatever, we'll ask the engineers in the room. One oh three, one oh seven divided by thirty five. Whatever, four. Sure. Does that work?
Three.
I don't know.
No, it doesn't work.
No, because that's a hundred and twenty. It is three. It's three, it's three. You can't get four. You can get three.
Real estate.
Sorry.
Isn't there?
You actually wanted to have a, you actually wanted to have a real question.
Well, it's not a good question, but it just.
Can't be as bad as Chase's.
So in, if I remember correctly, and I could look it up, and you would tell me, in the minor subdivision code, it can only be divided once.
Mm hmm.
And any future division has to go, like, there's a DEQ requirement in there, I remember correctly.
Also, you have to go through the full major subdivision. And so it's everything. It's the whole shebang. If you're going to cut it, if you're going to cut it more than the one time.
So they would have to do that to get these thirty five acres that you.
No, they could cut the thirty five acre because thirty five acres are exempt from the subdivision requirements. So, and the way that it reads, both in the statute and in our regulations, that an agricultural subdivision, which is defined as a division that results in at least. That the property, that the piece, that the, the divided pieces or the future divided pieces are at least thirty five acres. So a seventy acre lot, you slice it in half without even coming to the board. You just deed it off. And you just take the deed, you write up the legal description, you deed it off and walk away. Without even coming to the table. And then, once those are split into two, then each owner of that property could come in and say, well, I want to cut this thirty five acre half and this a thirty five acre and a half. And the next thing you know, you've got four pieces where you used to have one. But then that's it. You can't do anymore.
Without major subdivision.
Without major subdivision.
And you can't do family exemption and I'm going to have subdivided lot. So, so you can't use that either.
But you could take the thirty five and you could family exempt it.
Yep.
Clayton, would you mind for a minute speaking to the properties in the county that are still zoned A one and less than thirty acres?
Yeah. So this is an interesting conundrum. I actually live on a parcel that's five acres and is A one. And I didn't even realize it was A one until the other day. And so I went ahead and started doing, I started doing recreational services. I built some infrastructure. Um, they fish, but they don't catch anything. It's really hard to catch fish in the sagebrush. Um. Uh, but I do, uh, and since that fox moved in, I came and bring people to hunt rabbits. I used to be able to do that. Um, so what they do, what's that? Not anymore. They're gone. But, um, issues being rabbits. So. It's interesting because the rules don't specify that you have to treat anything less than thirty five acres. Uh, or less than, I believe it's twenty acres. I think it's twenty. So you have your minimum lot sizes. In the regulations, we have a provision that talks about minimum lot sizes. And it says for, you know, whatever type of property, it has to be at least so big. So for residential, unless you're in those micro, less than six thousand square feet ones, then your residential lots have to be two acres in, um, Sublet County, for example. So in that paragraph, it talks about and says that agriculture properties have to be twenty acres.
I think it's thirty. I'm pretty sure it's thirty.
So the division is thirty five, but the minimum lot size for agricultural purposes, I believe, is twenty. Um, but either way, I, and yes, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Um, it is what it is.
But in that space. This conversation has come up before that we would essentially, for all intents and purposes, treat those. Less than twenty A ones as though they were residential because they don't meet the minimum lot size to have the same. To be able to do an agricultural operation, which, yeah, so it's, and it's weird because it's still zoned ag. But essentially the rules, and this is what's interesting is that.
Five.
Is it thirty five? So, okay, so.
This is what you're saying is what we actually put into our draft regulations.
Yes, because we had this conversation because it comes up and it's kind of a problem. Because what do you do with the thirty four acre agriculture piece when the person wants to have a guest ranch on it? Well, it's not big enough to functionally have it. And so I think, yeah, is it, it is in the draft regulations, right?
We, we put language in there that basically said we treat non-conforming A one.
As.
The size, so it fits in with the RR residential, whatever lot size it is.
Because that's basically what it is. And that's basically what, so my five acres, although it's zone A one, it's residential. I can't do anything else with it. So, I don't know. Does that, does that help? I don't know. Or were you not paying attention? So they're. And that's why we're doing the zone change.
It's something that like we've seen in the office when people. And being even about short term rentals and pointing out best houses, even though they're zoned A one, if it's ten acres. They don't necessarily be.
Yep. Um, can I just ask a quick question to follow up on the perk test? I was sending an email, um, when you were talking about perk test. So there was a perk test that was how close and how recent was it?
Yeah, I believe it was well. Was it for fifteen hundred? Because I know state statute does allow if it's nearby, but I, for like adjacent property. But what steps? It's across the street or across the street from Ben's or something.
Are you saying that that would be acceptable to understand if it's feasible? Because regardless of what, whatever tests happen now, at the time a site plan's developed, I mean, you, you do three, you average them, you know exactly what it is. Where it's going to go. And it can change a lot in a hundred feet, you know, so, I mean, I guess that's my. My thinking, looking into it, especially with the groundwater levels is, um, you know, it's, it's going to happen again for sure. We can design around it. Um, but I understand, uh, Mr. Lacinic's point two of, it says it shall, and it puts you in a bind. I mean, that's definitely solvable.
Can, I mean, I just went through the miners subdivision process. I have no intentions of building and we did the perk test too, right? Because it says it.
Well, and it's interesting because like a perk test right now, the perk test this week or whatever, what's going to be between now and then, it's not going to be the same perk test.
Right, but the regs don't say.
Yeah, it's no, no, I, I, no, I, I was just asking, I just wanted to see what the rest of the conversation was around the perk test because I had missed it.
Looking into DQ regulations too, because I, we were even talking about whether when we look at the regulations again, if you. Again, if it's in the statute, I mean. At least.
Right, but if, but, but it may be that we, I mean, based on this conversation, it may, if state statutes don't disallow it, we might consider changing the language. Which is what I hear you saying, which sounds reasonable, but.
Because it does, it does, it is somewhat of a. Useless requirement. Because, yeah, just like you said, you did a perk test on yours when you were going to split it. useless requirement, because, yeah, just like you said, you did a perk test on yours when you were gonna split it.
Right, but I think that, I mean, my guess is, is the purpose is that it demonstrates to a potential buyer that, you know, that the perk test has been done and that you could have a septic system, right, or?
Yeah, but before you build, you're gonna have to redo the perk anyway.
Exactly, but, but as someone who's making a decision about buying land, wouldn't find that out until they went to get the building permit and blah, blah, blah. So I get, I mean, this is my guess on why that's there, is that. Well, I guess it's intended to demonstrate to a potential buyer that.
Yeah, and that makes, and that makes sense. I guess the, the reason I say that it's somewhat useless is because you can engineer, you can engineer around any groundwater situation.
Well, we might want to change the language then.
Correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, but I think this came up with one of the subdivision reviews where perk test results aren't on the plat. So it's almost like the person buying the property typically you look at the plat. You want additional information, you're going to have to come to our office and they're gonna have to dig everything out, and typically not everyone goes through all of that. So to me, it's almost like, put it on the plat if it's, if it's required, and if it's something that would be of value. That's just, that's my opinion, but. I think, and I don't know if it's always on the plat, so I don't think it is.
Anyway, I was curious. I just, I just wanted to ask the question. I didn't, I didn't, I missed the conversation, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, you guys good?
Stuck here for a little bit.
Do you need, do you need me to stay here?
Oh, I, I had a question. This might be, this is actually for Haley, I think, but the, um, if I miss this, I'm sorry, but I saw that there's like the overview of what the agency letters were, but I didn't see the actual agency letters. Did we have those? And I missed it. I'm sorry, I missed it then. Okay, my, my apologies.
Same to Wyoming, um, Weed and Pest. I reached out to Weed and Pest a while ago, and I didn't get feedback from them, and they did reach out to me a couple days ago. But it wasn't, it was more trying to get that introduction with them, so I never got their review on it, but they did send me a packet about weed, about weeds, and I think it was stress also in the subsequent conversation just heard. I did.
Okay, I'm looking at it.
Okay, I just wanted to see what the recommendations were from the game and fish folks. I see it here. It looks like. Yeah, I'm looking at it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A deer, yeah.
Sage grouse. And a low-use portion of the sublet mule deer migration quarter. So in the past, when there's been the winter, crucial winter stuff, they typically will have recommendations around dates, uh, but I don't see that in here. That right? Yeah. Yeah. But I don't see that in here.
Interesting too. I wonder, this letter, I thought there was like a header on it. On there. But it'd be hard to tell. So, Brandon, it is, yeah, that's really.
Well, when you scanned it.
Is there, was there any, um, Mike or the applicant, whoever wants to answer, I guess, does any recommendations from Sublet County Conservation District or Wyoming Game and Fish that you are not okay with following? It looks like it's pretty basic stuff, but I just wanted to ask if we were to condition it based on that, that would not put an undue burden on you guys to follow the recommendation. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've already, I mean, I usually set these up, I mean, with the statutory requirements, and then what, you know, we send out the notices and we get letters back, and we've already discussed it, that we'd add that note to the plat, wildlife-friendly fencing. I think everybody's on board with that anyways, but.
And we are very familiar with those programs. We manage the double J ranch, so we've worked very closely with uh, everyone in the conservation district to NRCS. To, the list is quite long, but we're very familiar with it. It's easy, it would be easy for us to do.
Great.
Um, so another kind of dumb question is you mentioned the easement, using the current easement, is that like turn into the double J ranch?
No.
Where?
No, do you want to pull that map up?
So I went up by it, but I wasn't sure where that easement. Just off the highway, right?
It's just like our.
So, so.
You can pull in like a car right now. It's high and dry.
So there's, if you zoom in far enough, Haley, there's a field access across from Ben's. On that high and dry area right there. Yeah, so that's an, so initially I had it set up to where it comes off straight across from Ben's. Talked to YDOT and they're like, there's an existing field access there. Why don't we, we just shift it over? So we modified it over, and it's, it's just a change of use permit with YDOT, and we've gone over with them. We haven't submitted it because we want to make sure everything went forward, but, yep.
And visibility. The ditch up there with all the willows, um, it's actually like a divot. So if you're driving in the winter time to like pull out, it'd be kind of dangerous.
So, and just to be clear on the other, like, I guess the Sublet County Conservation District, the other ones where they recommend erosion control, uh, wellhead protection zones, weed management. I guess those things, those are all.
All that stuff is, is regulated by the SEO as far as well completions, DQ, you know, I mean, we have to meet DQ regulations with septic and erosion controls more for steeper land, you know, anything with slope. And in, in this case, it's pretty flat, it's the haymeadow, so I don't anticipate any erosion issues.
Yeah, I don't, it makes, and their soil analysis, it has some comments about the types of soil and being subject to wind erosion and blah, blah, blah. So I'm trusting the experts are making recommendations based on things that we should pay attention to.
It's, it's a lot of, it's based on mapping, you know, it's not a lot of in-situ testing, so. I mean, generally speaking, I think they're, they're correct, but every site, everywhere he goes, a little different. It's just like per grades, really, so.
But I guess that if we said, you know, we want to prove this condition on following their recommendations, that would be, I mean, you'd be amenable to that, that wouldn't cause any issues.
And I don't think that that's my reading of it. That's a generic, but some of.
It is typically. I mean, though, I'm, they, they, they don't always make that recommendation.
Um, do we need to put a condition on that though? Because it sounded like from the staff report, that was all, you had agreed to all that anyways through the application process. Right, that they would follow game and fish, the wildlife fencing, you know, the weed spraying term, weeds are not just, you know, because of disturbance of ground. I mean, I don't think we need to please say that necessarily.
Is there an explicit agreement to that?
Just. It's not on the plat, the, this information, and I think that's for the wildlife fencing, could be something of a suggestion to add it to.
Yeah, it's, you know, very commonly we include that language in the general notes, um, for fencing, for wildlife fencing. But as far as, you know, you know, erosion control and things like that, I mean, I've never, I've never seen that on the face of a plat.
Right, right, right.
And unless you put it on the face of the plat, I don't know how enforceable it is.
But I guess we'd go by the honor system, in that case.
I mean, yeah, I, I, there's nothing in there that I, you know, I disagree with, or I don't think the applicants disagree with any of it.
Questions from the commission.
Thanks. No. Um, any public comment, excuse me? In the room or online? Do we, do we have anybody online? No? All right. You can, uh, return to your seat, I guess, at this point, if you want. That was not a go.
Well, Chris is here now, so we're, we have another, Chris is here, Chris is gonna say I, it's gonna like critique when.
No, no, I don't.
I want, I want that email, that's all I know.
So as far as, um, I guess, potential conditions, we have discussed perk test.
And then following the recommendations of the Conservation District and Game and Fish.
And YDOT.
Why not?
And residential access. Right?
I think that's all that we have discussed so far.
Yeah, and I, and I can never remember the order when we've done this in the past. Do we do the minor subdivision first or the change of zoning district first?
The, well, the order, it's in the application was zoning first, although I know that was.
I feel like in the past, it's unclear which is first.
Zoning first? Okay.
You were right.
I am curious though, these things that are going to these conditions, are these recommendations for conditions to be included? Or just part of the ocean?
I mean, it sounds like the wildlife-friendly fencing would be, uh, that would be kind of followed best practices. That makes sense. I don't, I, I think as Mike suggests, the other ones probably don't make sense to put on a plat. And we're just trust that.
Perk test, if we, you know, wanted to follow the regulations, would be prior to the B O C C meeting.
Yeah. Yep.
Does anybody want to? Make a motion here?
I would just read Haley's to some degree with. Go ahead.
You go ahead.
I'll do it.
Chris will do it.
This is like my.
Am I allowed to do it?
Yeah.
You're allowed. It doesn't say you can't in our bylaws. All right, so I move to recommend the approval of the double J ranch zoning district boundary change from A1 agricultural to RR rural residential for a three acre parcel located within the northwest quarter, southeast quarter of section thirteen, township thirty-four north, range one twelve west, sixth PM pursuant to chapter eight, section two of the Sublet County zoning and development regulations, and that the ten findings regarding the zoning district boundary change were considered with the following conditions, um, that a perk test be performed with the results delivered to the planning zoning office prior to the Board of County Commissioner meeting on this application, and, uh, that the recommendations of the Wyoming Game and Fish and Sublet County Conservation District are followed, um, in the instance of the wildlife-friendly fencing recommendation that that is noted on the plat, and that the YO dot recommendation regarding the easement is followed.
Yeah, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Say aye. You know what? I'm sorry, friendly amendment on my own thing. I guess it doesn't really matter. The perk test is specific to the minor subdivision, but it doesn't really matter, I guess.
Oh, right. And this is the reason?
Right.
So if we, we want to strike that from this?
No, well, just, it doesn't really matter. It's all one thing. Let's just keep it or whatever.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you say something? Okay. Good, good. Okay, it passes oro. Okay.
All right, so, uh, I'll make a motion, I'll move to recommend approval of the double J ranch minor subdivision, creating one three acre lot and one one hundred and seven point two seven acre lot remainder parcel, based on the findings that the application meets the requirements of the Sublet County subdivision regulations, with the same conditions as noted in the change in zoning district boundary.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Did a great job on that.
Can you send these, can you send those to me?
Sure. I was just reading off of what Haley gave us, but absolutely. Can, before you guys run off in Clayton, I'd love to, there was a, I wanted to revisit the historic double J ranch application, if we could, to get some clarity. Maybe you all don't need to stay here, but, um, in twenty twenty-two, we did the guest ranch. It was kind of unusual in the sense that in that, in the P and Z application or hearing, um, there were some concerns expressed, and towards the end of that conversation, at the time the planning administrator, Dennis Forstrom, suggested, well, why don't we just make a contingent on a business plan in which the applicant will bring back a clear plan of what they want to do or condition, and, and so we said, okay, that sounds reasonable. We did that. It then went to the B O C C with that, uh, with their recommendation for approval with, uh, conditioned on the business plan. The B O C C, I think, then had a conversation and, and you advised them, which in retrospect, I think was, it made total sense that that was not a great way to do it, because the business plan could exceed the scope of what was allowable, or there could be a contradiction between the business plan and a guest ranch. Uh, and so in that, uh, hearing, the B O C C said, okay, well, we're gonna get rid of the condition, but approved the application as presented. So it, it was a little bit tricky as to what the scope then is of, of the, uh, guest ranch. There were, you know, what we have to look at is the application that was submitted, and we have the, um, what the, the statements that were made in the hearings about things about maximum number of guests and types of activities and quantity of activities and things like that. But it seems to me that that could like, does that, the way that that went down was just so unusual that it, you know, it just simply says in the record that a guest ranch conditional use permit was permitted. I guess I worry about there being a common understanding amongst all the stakeholders of what the actual scope of that guest ranch operation is. I mean, every aspect, I mean, typically we would, yes, that, those are good examples, but also, you know, it came, it came up again during, uh, I think it was Mr. Christensen that was presenting on the Deadshot application in which they used, uh, the double J ranch as having set precedent for the sorts of things that they wanted to do on the Deadshot at that point. I said, geez, I don't, that doesn't sound right to me. We went back and we looked and it, and then, and then the double J application, there was reference to about two weddings per year and select corporate events. Okay, so we said, well, then there was a conversation about that, it's kind of anchoring to a certain number of events that would take place there. But there was argument about, well, it says about to, and it says select corporate events, and what does that really mean? How many events? These were the source of questions that came up in the original P and Z hearing that we felt a little bit uncomfortable about the ambiguity and wanted that business plan to tell us, what are you really gonna be doing? So, yeah, it is about number of guests, it's about types of events, quantity of events, amount of traffic, it's all of the things that we typically would, would put as conditions, uh, but because of the way that one went down, it just ended up going kind of haywire, and all of that stuff was left out in the, in the wild. Right, but, but that actually doesn't have any, uh, it doesn't have any guidance on what your scope is, because that ended up, that whole idea of like, let's use the business plan, the Board of County Commissioners. that whole idea of like, let's use the business plan the board of county commissioners did away with. So that doesn't actually dictate what the scope of the guest ranch operation is in the way that it played out. So that's why I'm asking Clayton, and I kind of wanted to just make sure that you all were in sync and were in the counties in sync with like, what are the parameters of that guest ranch? Because I think it could be a big question. I don't know. Does do, are we all in of the same understanding? I mean, I put, I kind of compiled a list of things from the application and from the statements that were made in the both the P and Z hearing and the B O C C that I think kind of speak to that, that. And again, you all weren't expecting to go through this tonight. So I don't, we don't have to do this all tonight, but I just thought good opportunity to have a discussion because you're here.
For me, I don't know, say, personal. Jay Foundation. Same contract. And same thing, maybe two weddings.
What is the actual?
So, so, so the way that conditional uses use permits work is that, you know, basically the reason it's a conditional use is because if it were a permitted right, it seemed that it could be harmful or injurious in some way to the community if everybody just did got the right to do it by right. So, so conditional use permit would typically have a set of conditions associated with it. We started to go that route. It kind of went haywire because of how we tried to do it in that particular case. So what I want to make sure is that, you know, your application sets some parameters based on what you said you're going to do. So ultimately it was approved as presented. As presented, I think means both a combination of what was in writing in your application and what in the hearings you agreed to as far as the sorts of parameters. So my question is just, do we have? Well, that would be an interesting question to ask, although I guess I don't worry so much about that more than just making sure that we're all in agreement so that there's not a, you guys say, well, wait, I thought we had X right. And the county says, no, we think you have Y right. I think we should just make sure that we all understand what the actual parameters of the operation are.
So you have six individual Airbnb. And in the original, the Airbnb permit came out that year. And he was, that was why we went with the conditional use permit because we didn't want to register one of those things as individual. I think it was for a year. And so I think that was the original reason why we went down the conditional use.
Yeah.
Or season rentals. Originally, when I was meeting the dentist. I began, because we came to them. They don't want regular rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying you did anything wrong or made the wrong call or anything. I just, I just, you know, I think it came up. You're, I think the operation as the applications for mentors talked about like, you know, about twenty guests. We have about five or six staff. We're going to use about six building or eight buildings and we have a barn. And there was just parameters around it. I think then it was, when it was brought up as precedent for doing something in operation that I'm not meaning to call you out, Steve, but just by case that it was a different operation. They said, well, the double J is doing it. I thought, huh, I mean, I didn't actually know because you weren't here to speak for yourself, whether that was in fact what you're, are you doing much bigger things or not? But it just made me start to think at that time. But geez, I wonder if because of the way that went down, it ended up being a very different operation than what was presented in the application. It is. Okay.
Yeah, and we talked about that kind of that I don't know what process it got stuck. And I was expecting us to at some point get a stamp piece of paper that said, who has?
Right.
Providing a letter with and I checked minutes from the P and Z meeting and.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
CUPs are an interesting just because there isn't any sort of on term clients check or monitoring with the county. And so I've had a couple of questions about CUPs in the county that were not related to this. They're not here related to to guest branches or anything, but then I'm going back looking through the permit, listening to the minutes and being like, oh, interesting. They actually are supposed to be doing this, but I was not really follow through. You know, the permit was issued a year and a half ago and there wasn't the follow up. So it's more me trying to figure some of these things out.
Yeah. Well, that's a good, that's
brought up some questions.
That's, that, that's what I wondered too. Clayton, like in it, I mean, I just made a statement. I wonder if you agree with this or not, but I said, I think that anything that a applicant says either in writing in their application or statements that they make within the context of a formal hearing around the application are commitments that define the parameters, meaning if maybe the application doesn't say maximum number of guests, but in a hearing, we say, how many, what's the maximum number of guests you're going to have? And they say fifty that that actually is an agreement that that's a parameter around the operation of the guest ranch. That may not end up in the actual written text of the resolution or the permit or the application. But it's been said in the context of a hearing. Does that, would that legally bind them to sticking to that?
It was create. She also had a very fine line. Fine line is such. How we came up. Where does county's authorities regulate? You know, where's, at what point in time as it starts to move one side of the spectrum, other, has the county cross the line? Business operations. And that's ultimately what it's. All to them that you're stuck in agency business plan.
Right, I agree with that. I don't think we should. I think that was a good move that we did not go to. I agree.
Yes.
And it's a, this is what we're doing. We just want to make sure that.
Right.
So I'm not really answering the question.
You're not.
Why we asked them? Where are the locations? And that is Deadshot turned into what? Prime would govern, but was allowable. Now, I don't remember particularly. I remember looking at the if I'm remembering correctly from this up. There was a master. Like, hey, this will carry. And that the understanding at that time. That this whole castle was not going to be. This will be. So the same way, and I can't remember if it was reduced to an actual on master plan. But in this situation, that's why we have the master. Our condition, master plan that was as building laws. And had that gone as according to plan, that would have been.
Right, but let's say, let's say that in the application, let's just as an example, in the application, there's nothing speaking to, and this is not the case with you. You guys did, but I'm just going to use this as a hypothetical. In the application, there's no mention of a quiet time, right? A time after X hour, you know, there won't be noise. But a lot of people show up in the community and they say, we have a lot of concern about noise and we say, okay, you know what, as a, you know, we see that this could be harmful to the surrounding members if, and so we, we want to do a curfew or a night, you know, quiet time of ten P M. Are you guys good with that? And they say, yeah, we're good with that. But we don't make it a condition. And it's not in the application. Are you, is that so not enforceable? If they, if there are verbal statements made of agreement of what they'll do. So we need to make sure, I mean, that puts a huge burden on us to then we have to then make sure when it, before it leaves here, that it has every verbal statement that's been made is in writing as a condition. I know, but I'm talking about, I am, I'm not talking about getting in somebody's business operation. I'm talking about where we find it to be. Our job is to make sure that the operation is not harmful. That's why it's a CUP. So I'm talking in all, let's, let's assume that that's the, that's the area we're playing in. We're not talking about getting into their business operation, but anything that, any verbal statements that are made that don't fall into that overreach and to running somebody's business.
The conversation, but nothing. I think it's not an actual. It's going to be something that there will be help, help to be in motion and.
Okay. So I'll just say, I think that's a, thank you for that clarification. I think that's a huge variance from how we've been operating as long as I've been on the board. I don't think, I think it has always been assumed that if someone there's a verbal statement made that that is part of the record, that that's part of what's being agreed to. So I just think that for us, we have to really make sure that we embody that reality and that we make sure that everything is a condition.
Well.
That is, that falls into that scope.
He may very well end in litigation over that. May very well be found to that.
Okay, well, I mean, so then what would be the conclusion of that statement? But that means what? All right, I mean, that's a given.
I would like to make a statement too there that I think that nobody wants to over regulate. And when you have all these conditions and you're trying to think ahead of every scenario, I don't think that that's advantageous to the applicant or us as a board. I mean, we don't, we don't want to have to have all those conditions. I mean.
Well, right, I mean.
And I don't think we should have to have the conditions because we're thinking of every angle. Well, in case you do this or in case this happens, you know, there's there, there needs to be some autonomy in the operation when somebody comes in and tries to do something there, they have some freedom to do what they want. We don't want to over regulate and over tell them exactly what we expect them to do in order to approve this application. I do, like Clayton made the good point. I mean, and it's, that's major overreach.
But you're, you're, you're jumping way over here. There's a big distance between over regulation and zero regulation. I'm, and you're assuming I'm talking about over regulation. Well, I'm, which is not the case. I'm saying where and when we need to put conditions on things that we agree is not over regulation, but is doing our job as part of the CUP, which we can talk about what that is. But where we're not overstepping. And it's not in writing in the application. All I'm saying is we need to make sure that it is in writing. So assume it's not over regulation. Assume it's something that you agree with, that, that it's something that we all think is the right thing in order for this application to proceed.
Can I put a small example?
No, you guys can take off at any point. Sorry. Yeah. Thank you for your time. Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll be here till nine o'clock if you want to stick around. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You. See you.
Too.
There you go.
So I just want to give an example of just a situation. I won't give huge specifics right now, but an apple, it was, it's related to an application that was approved within the last eighteen months. And I was going through the actual CUP application in the minutes and it has to do with a fence with the neighbor. And it is in the minutes that the, it's somewhere documented that the applicant was willing to talk to the neighbor about a fence. But then they put the fence up and it's not the type of fence the neighbor wants. So I'm just trying to figure out, well, where does it actually say that the neighbor had to be notified about the fence? So it's, there are little things that I, it's.
When I remember that. So in that meeting, we sat here, we said to the applicant, they were, they were here, the neighbors were here, the applicant was here. And we said, are you okay? Will you talk with them? And they said, yeah, I'll talk with them. And they all said, yeah. And then they, you know, they all walked out the door.
And I think it was just in the minutes as part of discussion.
Right.
But then it's now the fence has gone up and the neighbors are like, this is not what we thought was going to happen. So now here I am like, well, I have to go back and listen to the minutes to see exactly how the motion was made and how, what was it presented to planning and zoning and look at the application. So it is one of those things. That's just a little example.
Gosh, I hope we don't get into that.
I wouldn't do anything. It's more, I've had someone come in, that is the neighbor, and it's like they got the CUP under the impression that something was going to happen. So now it's coming back to our office. So now I'm like trying, it's, that's just an example of a situation where the discussion may have happened and it may not have been fully documented with the motion. But I'm going back.
What is? Would the condition of them talking to their neighbor have impacted the approval of the fence? Like, was that?
They put the fence up and it's a wildlife friendly fence and it's not a screening. So that's kind of where it's really our development codes discuss screening fences. So I have to go back and look at the developments.
It's a light industrial area.
Yeah, anyway, it's just, it's just a little example of something where they're the follow through. Just, I mean, it's and I feel like the formal complaint is more discussions in the office. And these are kind of the things people come in about and it's trying to figure out where we draw the line.
Yeah, enforcement is a huge issue.
Term rentals of their neighbors. I mean, we are getting phone calls about this kind of stuff a lot.
Are we really? I'd never, I never, I've never heard anything about that.
Short couple about short term rentals where my neighbor has a short term rental and they're, they don't have a permit. So it's surprisingly.
Yeah.
Just some of the things that come in. We are, yes.
As you can imagine, my favorite phone calls come in between four thirty five and five P M. I know everybody's the same way on that one.
Sorry, I'm trying to.
No, you're good. You're good. Um. My co, I guess, counterpart, so to speak. The civil attorney for Albany County called me this afternoon at four thirty five. And he mentioned to me that there is, there is some discussion in Albany County about short term rentals. And he said that there is, that this group in the community that was discussing limitations on short term rentals and everything else brought our regulations to the table and said, hey, this is what they're doing in Sublet County. Just like we're always like, well, this is what they do in Park County. This is what we're doing here. Well, they brought up and said, this is what they do in Sublet County. They put it on his desk. And he looked at ours and said, the county doesn't have the authority to grant a license. Those are legal. Which I don't necessarily agree with him, but just putting this on your radar that this may come up in conversation. Not necessarily from the perspective of a short term rental granting a person the ability or limiting the ability to have a short term rental. But the, the ability for the county to grant a license that is renew, that has to be renewable. This gentleman came for his, he was telling me and I told him, I said, hey, send me your case law, send me your stuff. And he's like, well, it's gray. Sweet. That's great. What's that? It's always gray. And even if it's black and white, we make it gray. Kind of like what my hair is starting to do, but the point being, this may come up. And so what this group has done is they have. put together a petition to ask the attorney general's office to review it. I don't think the A G's office is going to review it. I'm going to make some phone calls tomorrow and kind of see what their intention is. But to come out with an opinion essentially on whether or not the county has the ability to grant a license. License being different than a, a permit that is, is permanent. Um, we do have conditional use permits and we have other permits that go with, no, we're trying to, the conditional uses go with the land.
There have been conditional uses that do have time periods as a condition.
We have, and when we talked about those and we talked about that aspect of the logistics of that, of what that looks like. And I think in, it might've been even in that application where we talked about it, whether or not it sticks with the property owner and, you know, if you.
It was that application.
Was it? Cause we talked about corporate ownership change. Like does that pay out? So you recapitalize the corporation. Does that negate your conditional use? Anyway, long story short, this may come up. I'm going to do some research on it. I don't necessarily think that we're outside.
The distinction between permit and license meaning like, cause we have like, what's the, I don't understand that.
We have to renew. So in our, uh, they have to renew every two years, I believe.
Okay. So that's a license as.
That's a license as opposed to, cause it's not permanent. You know, it's not, it's not something that they have in resolution. It's like, hey, Chase and that glorious beard can have a, uh, and have a short-term rental as long as that property is there. Like we're not saying that. We're saying Chase, if he wants a short-term rental, he has to come back every two years, whether he may or may not have a beard at that time. And come back and say, I want to renew my license.
And if he doesn't renew, then.
Shave his beard. No, um,
just if we. As a point of clarification, at our next meeting, I'll still have a beard and Clayton will be clean shaven. So.
Or at least that's what Chase thinks is going to be the case.
Official about having it, the license is that if we update the regulations, then.
They have to come and make some.
So my understanding, and this is, so I own, my wife owns an Airbnb in town. And their justification for the license and the renewal is to make sure that it's in compliance with the, you know, whatever fire marshal stuff. Um, and it gives them an opportunity, like you have to have the property re-inspected every, I think, I don't know if it's annual or two years. Is there a mechanism with a permit? So let's say that, you know, it comes out that like, yeah, you can't do this every two years or whatever. Is there some mechanism where you have to show that you, you're in compliance every so often with a permanent permit?
I, that's a good question. Um, and I need to look at this and see, and, and don't get me wrong. I, I think the county is fully within our, we are regulating the use of property, which is exactly what statute, the state specifically allocates that, that authority to the county and the county's doing it. So I, I think we're on solid ground and I will be shocked if the, number one, if the A G's office doesn't do what they normally do, which is says, uh, hey, call your attorney. I don't think they're going to do anything. And I also don't think that if this ends up going to any court and winds up at the Supreme Court, that the Supreme Court's going to come back and say, no, you can't have a license on an Airbnb. I just, just don't think that that's going to come back. But to your, to your point of, I, I don't know, we, if, cause if you can't, if a county were prohibited from essentially doing some kind of compliance check or, or having something there that would limit the person's ability to continue to operate. What is the foundational understanding of why we have planning and zoning?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. So we'll see. I, I'm just putting this on your radar. I don't have it. This, like I said, this thing came in at four thirty-five and just, and, and I.
I would turn it into a very different animal.
We got a, we did get a phone call in our office. I, Christie got the phone call and it was from them also, and I wasn't there and I was like there.
Was it from the county or was it from the, from the folks that live there?
From planning and zoning and they. Did just like county and Teton County and that like, we're the only two county, are we the? They said those were the two that they had looked into and. Yes.
I said, I say bring it to anybody that tells us that we can't do licenses.
The name, like I need to call this person. I was like, I want to hear more about this, but.
Just put it on your radar, just because we were talking about. Short-term rental.
Yeah. I guess though, speaking of other regulations, maybe we should start the tower regs.
Yeah. Um, we can jump back into that.
Can I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Interrupt.
I wanted to start out too, before we dove into these tower regulations. To give you guys, first of all, there's a ton of papers sitting here, so I wanted to go through those. Then I also wanted to let you know that I, um, talked to Melissa Ruth. She's the one that Holly had reached out to. So Melissa Ruth is with Logan Simpson and she's an associate planner. She's also on the Y O pass board and like with the American Planners Association. So really the reason I reached out to her was more because of Y O pass. It has nothing to do with her being like a consultant. It was because of the Y O pass connection. And then Andrew Brown, I was put in touch with him through Y O pass also, and he's a senior planner in the town of Jackson. And he actually worked for Teton County before, and then he worked for, he's had like a ton of experience with planning. And he's also on the Y O pass board. And they both, we kind of just were talking about the Wyoming Planners Association. I was telling them a little bit about the regulation drafting and where we are with things and the tower codes and everything. And they actually said they would come down to Heidel December eighteenth and talk to us if you guys are open to that, but they are willing to come here and just do a small presentation about like planning and zoning, Y O pass, talk about regulation drafting. And if you guys are curious about anything else, we can set up a future phone call with them. But I've had a couple of conversations with Melissa and I think it's been very helpful to, and like, she's been working on regulations up in Park County. And I've talked to Joy, who is the Park County planner. So I've heard it from different perspectives. And I do understand too, when it comes to talking to consultants, I am, we have to be sensitive just getting, you know, talking to consultants, but I feel like it is the Y O pass connection. And she has a lot of experience with Y O pass and different organizations. Yeah. They both said that they would come and I said, how about 30 minutes, 30 minutes or so. And if you guys want to ask questions, we can kind of go from there. They have a lot of different PowerPoints and trainings. We talked about RFPs, RFQs. How do we go about regulations, doing them in-house versus getting a consultant? We then dove into the tower regulations and I said, yeah, we thought we'd just start with the tower regulations. Let's start with something kind of small. And they were like, just so you know, and Christie was in this too. Just so you know, the tower regulations can be one of the hardest ones because really there are so many things you cannot control. And we, and yeah, the missteps that you can take when it comes to following some of these outside regulatory requirements. And they said, as much as you, you might want to do it on your own, this is one that can be a, a challenging one where you almost want to base your regulations off of, start looking at the high level regulations and then see where your flexibility is based off of those high level regulations. And we're like, it's really, these ones can be the, the tougher ones because you have more federal regulations that you need to follow. But they did say, and hey, I understand some people might say, get these regulations out of this room. But I printed out the Teton County power regulations and I do have a few copies. But they said, you know, one thing to keep in mind, Teton County, I know there's a lot of comments about, we are not Teton County, but they have. But I want you guys to just.
Because they make all their money off of sales and use taxes.
I want you to realize though, when it comes to regulations.
Because they make all their money off of sales tax, Tammy. They don't need to mill. That's where.
Let's, they could, but they don't.
Okay. We could argue about the sales tax, um, but, um, they have put effort into their regulations. And they did say they are in need of updating them because these were done a few years ago and there have been some updates since the regulations, but they, I mean, we talked about them a little bit and then I, I printed them out and I started reading it like 30 minutes ago. And was like, oh, this is actually, this is interesting, the way they break this down. So I just thought I would print it out. I think we could still go through our questions, but, um, I thought that was just interesting talking with them about it. And then I also failed to advertise our December twentieth meeting before the thirty day deadline. The eighteenth, I, I failed.
Were there applications?
No, there were no applications, but we cannot pass any regulation. So I had.
I think we're in danger of that.
I know. Well, I was like really kicking myself. I was really like upset at myself because by the time I remembered, it was like two days late and I had just sent in like all the other notices for the commissioners meeting. For the CUP for Albert Ellis, that's going to the commissioners on December second. So I had to get that in the paper and meet those deadlines. So then I forgot about this meeting on December twentieth. But I, it is in the paper today as just like a Y O pass coming and to talk about the tower regulations. So I'm sorry, I failed. I failed us, but, um.
Might be good.
It might be. I know. We were joking that maybe it was a good. Anyway, that's kind of where we are with things. Um, and where we left off last time, we were going through this tower regulation discussion. So I printed that out and the green is comments from the last meeting.
We never got through all of them.
We did not. Um, the, the other packet, this is, it kind of has some little yellow highlights on the front page. That is the regulation draft where we left off last week. I actually have started to go through and do some drafting based off of comments. But I did not include them tonight because I just thought it might confuse our conversation tonight. So this is the same version that's in the agenda packet and what we had last week. I mean, I started making revisions. I actually started making revisions based off of comments, but I didn't include that for tonight because it would be, I think it would make things confusing.
Doing the weeds.
Um, and then this is the chapter two zoning districts. I just printed that so everyone can see, you know, we have that. And then tower code comments condensed. These are comments that relate to the regulations from Union and L R. And then, um, any comments that kind of has some colored fonts. And then Chris, you have a comment even from the previous one, uh, the previous version. I have a couple of little comments mixed in also. And then.
Is the zoning districts? This is just to look at where we want to start.
Look at, in case we start looking at the zoning districts. And then the last packet is, I think that's it. So it's four packets. I mean, I might not have, I might not, you told me today.
No, I was just giving you a corner of the.
Actually, everyone should have that. Yeah. Everyone should have. So this, this tower code comment condensed was not in the agenda packet because it actually was in the PDF. These comments are provided to everyone. They're in the PDF, but you have to like click on them. So we just made it separate. So you don't have to.
No, I'm good. I didn't.
Sorry, guys. There's a lot of just moving parts with this. Um, but yeah, we left off just going through some of these, the, the, the tower policy discussion questions.
So we're at, should the height variance process be combined with CUP? On the last page.
Are we, are we on side? This is.
Yeah. Should the height variance process be confirmed? Should, do you guys want to just run?
Please just say for the second one.
Run through them and then we can kind of start back and see if we need the ones we need to revisit after.
Yeah. I mean, we can finish out the remaining questions and then do an overview.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
At some point, I just want to say at some point I have general comments that I want to make about this, but I don't, I also, let's keep your flow, but I just don't want later to, for you to say. I said that earlier.
You can do it now.
I feel like it's going to derail this whole thing though. This is going, so maybe, I mean, I'll do it whenever you want.
There's parts in this we have to go back to anyway.
Was instead of going through the regulations word by word was to more look at it big picture. And then Clayton and I go back and try to come up with something based off of that to help the discussion and help us get something drafted. And then once it's drafted, then we can go through it more.
That's where I'm at too. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm happy to offer my comments whenever you want, but I don't want to derail it. So happy to follow your agenda.
Um, I mean, we haven't really dove in yet, so I just want to make sure, I mean, we've got an hour and a half, so we can finish up these questions. You can do your comments and then we can run back through on anything that we want.
I might be able to weave them in here. Talk some.
Okay. So the next question we had was, should the height variance process be combined with the CUP to simplify, simplify a review?
Variance is not a good tool. So I think we, that's not the right path. So. Uh, the variance path is not good. So I think we should not do that. So I guess that would be a vote for yes, or some other alternative. Yes. Meaning that we just put it in the CUP.
So essentially granting authority in the CUP process for the
height.
For the height to be modified.
Does that work legally?
I don't see why not. If we want to build it, if you want to build it and do your regulations, I see what you mean about the variance process not making it work because we've essentially said that the variance is.
Not a self-inflicted.
Exactly. So we get into that whole issue. So, so it's like, you either modify it the way your variances work to address how you would do with the tower, or you just build in the authority in the CUP process.
I think the CUP process.
Cause there, if the CUP is for the tower, it may as well be part of the tower application itself.
I agree.
Cause towers are going to be tall anyway, like.
Yes. Yeah. I mean, the only, I think the part, the good thing that the variance, it just is a big flag that, hey, we need to pay attention. This is higher than the thing that was, is that to pay attention.
And if it puts it as one of the things that has to be considered.
Right.
Then you just have to consider it and review it.
Yes. Well, no, no variance. The great authority would be part of the C U D.
And we should probably use a different word other than variance, because that.
I agree. And I believe the draft regulation does have language in here about additional considerations that are, the way it was worded, it's on page. Okay. It's on page, on the bottom, right? The page twenty-three. Sorry, this is printout from the agenda. That's why it says twenty-three. Does in addition to other county regulation requirements, the board of county commissioners shall consider the following criteria in determining whether the recommended approval of the conditional use permit and height variance. And then it just like lists, lists those things, but we could just take out variance for that and still include that criteria. It's, you see it at the bottom.
I think that makes sense.
And just.
Yeah. You could say, and modified height.
Yes.
If, or yeah, you just say, and just, I'd say, yeah, just take variance out. There you go.
That can be part of.
Yeah.
Flying through these.
And then a question, just because I heard it and Haley just read, did you, Steve, did you send Clayton that email about the shallow and must discussion?
Well, I read that.
It was.
Shall and may's.
Must.
Just must and shall.
Yeah. See, I've always felt like shallow was the same as must, but then the, a bunch of those articles.
I will fight you.
He'll fight you.
Fight.
Like fist fight?
Please do.
Challenge him to a beard shaving.
Oh God. No, I, I think this could be a very good academic conversation. Let's have a coffee sounded.
All right. So we're not, all right. I don't, I don't want to derail us either. I was just curious if it was like a, yeah, something that was like, oh yeah, definitely. But okay. Well, we'll circle back to that after coffee. Um, all right. What level of public notice?
Um, all right, what level of public notice and neighbor engagement should apply current CUP standards or expanded outreach?
Here's where I might say if it exceeds the height, then it should go broader. If it doesn't, then it should be standard CUP.
Hmm.
The higher height will affect more people, right?
The currency, unless.
So do variances require more notice?
Now, the variances could be, I want to move my lot line two feet. Like, I mean, that's, that's about, that's a lean fact.
Say we typically do. From what I've seen in the past, I think the outreach is always, it's a thousand feet. I think it's always been a little bit more than a thousand feet nearly for most applications. But I think that's what it currently is for. Variances. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's the same distance for variances and CUPs though.
So what exactly, what level of public notice and neighborhood or neighbor engagement? Right, so that's public now. You want to go beyond what we already, we already notified.
Great, so. Alright, for under.
Well, I don't know what, what is, what expanded outreach would do besides that, that seems.
So if it is over the height requirement, then. Then reach out to beyond.
What was, if they say that the one, yeah, in, in big tiny, they sent a deal out. It was a hundred and fifty feet and then with what they were going to add, you know, the light layer, that ended up being over a hundred. And so the public was made aware of.
Oh, we sent, we sent a ton of notices out for that one. And I think we might. We did above and beyond on that one.
Well, that's because it's a highly concentrated area. Do the doubt. It's a curry.
But you'd still send the notices out surrounding people and I would think would be.
Would you think a thousand feet, you have a, or a fifty? Take a thousand feet.
Is that what that question has?
That's kind of what we're asking, yeah. Do, like as far as how do we, typically our public notices, the level of public notice is. We put it in the newspaper and. We have to do the advertisement that it's going into, that it's coming to planning and zoning. It's one advertisement and the public notice to the neighbors.
Which is a, a mail, mailed letter.
You don't certify.
They are not certified. I will say the certified mail. They do, and it, I mean, I feel, I was, I would. I, I think that the certified mail is. The number of note, it would limit number of notices because really right now we go above and beyond, and I think if it's certified, then all of a sudden we'd be like. Oh, actually, you really only need to notify this number.
So what did above and beyond mean in the big, tiny case? Like, what'd you do?
We might have done like twenty-five hundred feet or something.
Really?
But.
It was pretty far, it was far.
I will say that one was my first day when I started and the notices, the envelopes, Alan already made the notices. So it was kind of, okay, we're just sending them out, you know, and I think that's just been the standard practice to go above and beyond.
Right, but we should codify it because if we don't, then people accuse you of being biased if you don't do the exact same thing every time. So do, do we say that? Do we, I mean, if it exceeds the allowable height in any district that distance is doubled or something, I don't know.
Can we do that?
Sure. Although, I mean, what we have to consider is it's, it's the office, the office's time, though, dude, it's resources, so that's the, that's the downside of that.
Theoretically, the applicant can be doing some of these things, but we are doing them in our office because it's been done that way. And I, I am trying to, we are actually looking at this because. Like, what do we do? Just print the envelopes and like tell the person to go mail them or?
It's. I see you get through them. Give them all certification. They had to do it.
That's the thing, it's certified mail, where this, if it's not certified, I don't know for sure if it's.
They get to provide a list.
Yes.
Within certain radius. UP, they had a. So came through and said. Validated. And you just sort of like, why can't you just validate? Why can't the applicant?
It's, believe me, I know, I'm, it's more getting the envelopes together and making sure that they are going out because for all I know. Don't have any. Proof that they're being sent unless they could.
Sign, you can have them sign a note saying they sent.
They could come into our office and drop them off at the office and we take them upstairs for delivery. That's we normally.
But you, I guess, this is so not within this.
No, it's not.
But do you? Is that something you want to do? Is that something you want to? It wouldn't.
The mailing, does it present?
Just, believe me, it's more worth, this is what's been done before, so it's more, we're trying to figure out how do we improve this? And also just the cost of some of these applications, sending notices out, for example, the CUP for Albert Ellis. We had to send notices out twice because they tabled the application. And so it was more just like, okay, we're just going to send them out. We sent them out the first time. I'm just going to do it. But it's kind of one of those things that it's very. Even just to put it in the newspaper, it's to make sure we meet the deadlines. It's. I think some of this should be on the applicant.
Yeah, I would say expanded outreach, I mean.
The only thing is if it is, I mean, we could, if it is more of the macro tower, maybe there is more outreach because that tower you're going to see from further away.
Well, then maybe so. I would recommend. That you reach beyond area. You know, that you help get word out. Is what we'll do and.
Yeah, why don't you just, yep.
Right, that they, if it's in there and we state, I mean, even a, some of these properties are very big, so when you're. I think even for the double J ranch, I looked at a thousand feet. And then I looked at twenty-five hundred feet and it was the same number. So it's sometimes it doesn't make a difference depending on where you are, but then if you're in a city, it, in a city, you know, it's a big city. That's going to make a difference, so.
Well, in, in big tiny, how word got out was from Ray and Tracy Pape right next to it. I mean, they got word out themselves. The neighbors and stuff more, that's who they had heard. Um, I, I know of a family member that got it in the mail and asked me specifically about it. She had read it. You know, that I don't. But I don't know if extended outreach would have really gotten too many more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I would say other than the resource, I mean, I think it's always better. It being in our situation to be more communication than less, so, because people will, even when you do more, people are going to be like, I didn't know about this. Yeah, well, he sent you a letter, but. What if it's just a ten X? Of whatever the height is.
That's a lot on your planning and zoning minister.
Yeah.
Can't believe.
I mean, if it's a hundred and fifty feet, you go fifteen hundred feet.
Did Chase just revolve into podcast mode?
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I get tired of leaning forward all the.
Cup of coffee.
Typically, I think what's been done before to make sure the outreach is, is good.
And we don't have to decide on it right now either. All we have to say is do we think it should be expanded? Right now, right?
I think you do the research too.
I think.
See what other.
Yeah.
And then as far as the mailing goes, could you just in the application say like the applicant? Whatever s- certifies or, I don't know if that's the right word, that they have or will send out. Notices to neighbors within, I mean, you could provide a list or just put it all on them.
Even send a copy to the planning and zoning office, you know, always have us on the list so that like we at least get one too.
Well, usually.
We, I make it, I. Yes, absolutely.
You would have to approve the letter.
Yeah.
So Chase is saying it would be the applicant's responsibility.
Yes.
To do that. And you get a letter saying that that's okay, but it's up to them instead of you.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, I think it is in the, in the code right now. But there's supposed to send up to.
Is it?
Twenty-five.
So what do you do when, when people's? What do you do when then the people show up and they say, I didn't, they didn't mail me letters and it's not just one person, but it's five people or like, then you're like.
It's one of the reasons I think it's been done in the office is because we know for sure.
And you just know, yeah.
Well, why can't you say, I'm sorry that that was the applicant's.
Problem is, we get in a public meeting like this and we want to make sure the application is as complete as possible. And we might not know.
Right, but then by the time we come here, when you're certified, you know, your staff reports, the application, did they send out their?
Now that she's saying, in case they don't, but what would happen if?
Then they, then they lied and they lose their permit. Yeah.
Right?
But we don't know it until the meeting.
When we don't, I mean, people, we, I mean, I know people, I know for a fact that like. The offices mailed out stuff to people who sit there and say they didn't get it. And I'm not saying they're lying, maybe they didn't get it for one reason or another, but like. They may, you know, that may or may not be evidence that they didn't do what they should do, like.
Well, they, it may have shown up in their mailbox, but then maybe they didn't open.
Who knows?
Like.
Who knows?
Yeah.
I just, we don't want to be plain judge about who's telling the truth and who's lying at that point, it's like.
That's a good point.
In the staff report, stay in there. I mean, that's something you're going to have to decide.
I think, I think it's more something we have to figure out more on the administrative side of how we manage it and like. Because to me, I almost feel like if they brought them into our office, we actually are able to take stuff up to district court and they will take it to the post. But that's one way that we could do this is bring us in the notices with the envelopes.
Yeah.
And then it's a good compromise that like, hey, we can actually make sure that they're getting halfway to the mailbox, like.
Okay, so the actual question is. What level of public notice should apply current standards or expanded outreach? Um, sounds like maybe it's a little mixed, so are we going to, I mean, I'm. I guess I don't love like just obscure numbers without, you know, any reasoning, but if we have to put a number on it, is there a height in which we expand? Is it just macro towers? Is it? Let's answer that question, then we can figure out how to mail. The notices.
I think if it's within the height restriction. It's normal, whatever we do now. If it exceeds the height restriction, then it's expanded. I mean, I like your idea of like scaling it based on, because if it's five feet, does it really make sense to go to twenty-five hundred people? But if it's a hundred and fifty feet, yeah, it does, like. So I don't know how to scale it, but I don't, and I don't think we, but I, just as a general premise. I would say if it exceeds the height tolerance, then we should expand the outreach.
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to look.
Okay, so the answer is yes. We just have to figure out what.
What's the right measure?
Okay, what agencies should be invited to be part of the review process?
I think we had a comment about, I, Game and Fish.
Game and Fish has traditionally commented on these.
Anything related to if it's, I mean, this would be. You may already maybe get a notice, but as far as like if it's near a town. Should the town be notified at all? If it's like.
If it's outside of the.
Because I was just thinking about the one in Big Tiny where it was like, they weren't really notified besides that they got public. Notice.
Can we reach out to just the town?
That's. Yeah, like our office just. I'm not saying like, I don't know.
That's good neighbors.
She just to inform them.
I think that's a good idea.
If they're within a certain distance. Means subdivisions, if that regulation is still the same, the one mile distance.
Yeah.
Like. I don't know.
Yeah, actually, I mean, there's a lot in the comprehensive plan about improved communication between municipalities and within that one mile range, so I think that makes sense to use. Otherwise, I don't think any other agencies, right?
The only, I guess the, I mean, we've on development stuff, having the NRCS for ground disturbance. Is that right?
For, did they?
I don't know on towers, but just in general construction. If they're. You know, clearing ground, making sure that it's.
Hmm.
Weeds and whatnot, or, yeah. Or, yeah, I don't know. I guess that would be.
I don't know.
Those weed.
Yeah, well, that makes sense. I mean, we, we, I mean, weed and pest usually says if you disturb the ground and make sure you don't, then do weed mitigation, and that tends to be.
Paper that she sent me and she was like, this is typically like what we provide.
Like, their stuff's usually pretty boilerplate, the weed and pest.
So it's.
Yeah.
And we're saying we're going to give these agencies the opportunity to participate if they want.
To.
Participate or be notified that like. I, yeah, I don't know exactly what it would mean to reach out to the town, but.
We're just essentially saying, hey, Game and Fish, if you want to opine on this, feel free.
Yes, kind of, yeah, like what we do for subdivision or.
Hmm.
CUPs.
Yeah, I mean, the, who'd you say? The NRCS? Do you mean the conservation district?
Oh, yeah.
Weed and pest.
More resource conservation.
Service.
Yeah, I think so.
I just don't remember.
Conservation district or, and weed and pests.
I mean, I think the conservation district. They don't.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And I speak with them, typically unless it's what you should say, have to comment on, they don't want to.
Right, okay.
Just weed and pests? For soil conservation district?
I think I was thinking weed and pests for ground disturbance.
So maybe weed and pest, game and fish, um, if it's within a mile.
NRCS wouldn't be a bad idea if you're within a certain distance of. A specific risk.
Do you?
Like what? I've just never seen them comment on it.
Never, I don't think they've ever been notified.
They haven't.
But you, I think.
So when would you notify them?
I don't know if necessarily, well, with towers makes sense, because your tower's not really. Dealing with soils the same way that. Something else could deal with soils.
Well, like the big, tiny one, the big concern was that it's in like a wetland and. I mean, I don't know if they would have anything to offer there, but they would know more than I do, so it might be good to have. An opinion or not.
And this, this isn't necessarily outside agencies. It's more like when that one came in, I actually reached out to Billy Pape about it also. With access. And just to talk to him about like, hey, where, you know, I want to make sure that they have access to it. So we talked about like where the access could go. Um, so I don't know if we even need to put that in here, but. I felt like getting feedback, sometimes I am like, oh, maybe I should reach out to Billy or reach out to Shad. I don't know if we really need to put that in here, though. You know?
Yeah.
I think those three is.
Okay. Okay.
Because if, if even notifying the town or something, you know, they might. Help notify beyond there. By letting them know.
All right. Number six.
Compliance inspections and abandonment. Is the bonding requirement sufficient to ensure site restoration? What is the bonding?
The bonding requirement. Scott moved.
Oh, that was one of the things I was going to ask about.
We, we talked about having, is it page twenty-four? Yeah. Yes, that's where it is.
So what, so the idea behind that is that if they don't. Do what they say they're going to do, then you can, what, it's like an insurance policy where the county would do it and get paid for it, or how's that work? How's the bond work if things go awry?
So sometimes franchise companies have to have a bond where if like the franchise company moves out, then they have to like remove their utility. Um, so I just know when I was with the town, there were like all these communication lines up in town. And the, the company moved out and they just abandoned them.
Right.
So it's more if there's a situation of like abandonment that then it would be restored back to its.
But then the county would trigger the, call the bond company and say.
How do we, like, this would be a long-term bond, like this isn't like a two-year bond. It's like, how do you, but I think I've seen this before.
Well, I mean, that's how like oil and gas has to get a bond, right? Or like when the helium guys were here, they were trying, they had to get a bond. They explained it a little bit, but I just, I've never, has it been an effective tool? Does it work? Is it?
With oil and gas, if you, my dad had some gas wells and he had to bond them way ahead of time. And then if you wanted to plug in a band, then that bond had to apply to that in order for them to. Are they?
Yeah, so it covers.
Crazy expensive to get them. Like I just, to have it like long-term, I'm just wondering like how expensive are these things?
Right, then, I mean, it was, I just, but I mean, not, I mean, that was clear back when. I don't know what it is now.
Well, and a, a gas well would be a bit different than taking down a tower, I think, because you're wearing concrete and.
Yeah, you guys may have mentioned this, but we require bonding in our subdivisions.
Yeah, but it's only, that's the thing though, it's bonding, which.
For the purposes of.
But it might only be a year or two.
Yeah.
Versus a tower which is planning on being up. For.
Maybe, but maybe they put a tower up and decide this is ineffective. We don't have enough customers.
But at the end of the day, you think about the, the nature of who's putting up towers, it's corporations, corporations disappear bankrupt all the time. So yes, there are bonds to cover.
Yeah, it's probably.
Yeah, essentially if they went bankrupt, left town, whatever, and they just left their tower there. It's funds to cover, taking it down, reclaiming the, the ground.
Yeah, just that's all it is for. So it's like really the cost to do that might not be. I don't know.
I'd like to get TV providers to start doing that.
Yeah.
For my rentals.
It was, it was a phone company or TV cable company.
That's insane.
So then like I reached out to the power company and was like, can you guys please like if you're reach, if you're touching it, if you're on a pole and you see those cables, they started taking it down. That was so nice of the power company. Yeah. So.
I just took a listing of a rental that has six dishes on it. None of them are currently.
They all purchased in their new one on.
Yeah.
Right in here, you have all applicants pursuant to this section shall be, shall be accompanied by the requisite fees, insurance policy and or bonds required by the county. A bond must be provided before issuance of the building. So is the bonding requirement sufficient, efficient, what we have here?
And I think we were, the thought was that we are going to have, maybe we should mention a fee schedule. I think we are going to just include that in like a fee or a fee resolution. And not have it in here.
Do we have to specify a bond bonded mount?
So sometimes it can be like a hundred percent of the cost. They will provide a cost estimate.
Is that what you mean by the fee schedule? Oh, okay.
But so they would provide a cost estimate and sometimes a bond is like four hundred and a, a hundred and ten percent or a hundred and fifty percent just to count, account for like inflation and contingency and things. But I think if we had a resolution that was more for all of our fees, we could address it in that resolution. And so then if we make changes to fees, we can just make it in one place and not here. Maybe we can mention that, which I, I, I think fees really need to be looked at. So that's.
So we would refer to the fee schedule instead of putting the actual thing in here. Yeah. I think that makes sense.
Clayton, does that make sense or am I, okay? For the life of the tower. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they do have a, they do have an estimated life.
We should say that for life of tower.
It's a good idea.
And then if they.
You'll have more.
Remove or replace then the bond is released or replaced within.
Yeah, and you know, Teton County, they have in there is even about like replacements, what you have to do, what process you have to go through for replacements. The Teton, I did, I actually did, and I was like hesitant of bringing them in here. I think I only.
You can email anyone.
These are actually in the OneDrive folder. But it's the whole, the OneDrive folder is like the whole six hundred and fifty page of their regulation. So I thought it would just. How long? Six hundred and fifty pages.
Okay, should the two-year inactivity period before declar- declaring abandonment be shortened?
There was a comment from LR Communications about this. And it was, I think they said that's on, this is.
Which, which question is this? This is under, this is should the two-year inactivity period of abandonment?
Okay.
Before declaring abandonment be shortened?
Abandonment is she. Okay, so on the comments page, it's LR's comment on the back. About inspection. It's about inspection though. I, I thought he had something about it being too long or like we would do on, oh, yes, like we'd have to.
We'd have to inspect it.
Yeah.
We, we think the gist of what he was saying is how would we even know that a communication tower is no longer in use?
Exactly. I agree.
I don't know.
But if it's one fallen over, like, I mean, one that's.
No, I'm just saying, how, how do we?
I mean, you, it would, the way we could say you have to send in an annual thing that says here's an inventory of your towers and whether they're active or not, self-certification thing, right?
And are we going to start, I'm not sure, what is active and what's not?
Well, no, we're going to have them tell us. So they have to self-certify. And then we know if their tower is active or not. I don't know. That's the only, the way I, I would think.
Well, that could tie into the next question of something you guys are considering.
Oh, that is the next question.
Oh.
There again, though, we run into, it's a similar question to like the Airbnb thing. If there's not annual or biannual licensing or something. What is, how are we going to enforce that? If somebody doesn't send in their, our certification, what are we going to do?
I mean, I think we, it would be part of their, like, when they fill out their application, they would agree to self-certify on an annual basis. And if we, and then I'm guessing, you know, we'd be at, and we don't have a ton of people to keep track of here. This is going to be a handful of companies. So I think we just ask them. Or if they don't, then I think there's some language in there that says that there's some sort of penalty or something.
Every two years.
Sure, I kind of agree. I'd like maybe something.
I'm just thinking, I mean, top towers are put up for decades.
Yeah.
Yeah, two.
Sure.
I know, every five years might not even be. Yeah.
Although if you think they don't have a spreadsheet of all their.
Steve has a comment. We want to give him, I guess, well. Abandoned. So that would trigger the two-year.
Yeah. Yes.
That's a good point. I was also thinking like most of these companies that are active, I mean, I would expect like a larger company to have somebody that would do this fairly easily, but maybe the smaller operators, it's like, I don't know, just tedious paperwork, but when they come in for another application, you're like, well, you didn't give us your certification from last year, so we're not going to.
I bet Lance could give us within two minutes, a list of every tower he has.
I'm sure. I'm just imagining, you know, like, um, so, yeah.
Certification and like, just, do they have something that shows it as active, like in?
I don't, I don't even think that it, it just needs to be a list of, these are our active towers.
Or here's all of our towers, they're either active or inactive.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah.
I think we can't say that though, right? FCC has to manage that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not sure we can do that. But I'm all for it.
To wait, require compliance with FCC?
To have them tell us that they're compliant with FCC.
We're talking about abandonment and that if we have this to a possible inactivation period before it's considered abandoned, and then should we have some sort of self-certifying process? Where they have to certify to the county that it's still active. And if they don't certify, then we can, then that's triggers that it might be abandoned. But like, how often would we require self-certification? Or like, what is that self-certification process?
I think Tammy's right. If you do that, like maybe every five years.
I would ask, it could, I mean, it could be even ten. The towers are put up for a long period of time.
Yeah, we were thinking if it was every five years, then it's more just like, hey, we're checking in, like, give us an update on the tower.
Do we need to do that or just? Maybe it should let us know when we're together. I, I don't know.
Does, and this might be a question for us to follow up and be, maybe you can make a note to see if the FCC actually tracks that as well. Because
Right.
They are essentially covering those bandwidths into those areas. And because people pay for that bandwidth and so maybe they keep track of it and we can simply just get a report from them.
Um, I don't think the question before this is it said, should the two-year inactivity period before declaring abandonment be shortened?
Or longer? Or is that, I think.
Like after declared abandon, they have two years to, I don't think it should be shorter. I, I don't know. What do you?
This is saying if it's inactive for two years, then we assume it's abandoned.
That's what the current draft is, two years.
Be an activity period before declaring abandonment.
And then like we would, if they didn't take care of it, then we'd call their bond or whatever.
That's asking, do you think it should be short?
Right, I don't think so.
Okay. Or should it be longer?
Did you say Lance had a comment about this?
I thought Lance did, and now I'm like.
No.
Yeah.
I just recalled it.
Don't you recall him saying something?
I remember, I remember him talking about that.
He brought it to be able to.
You aren't going to be able to now.
Oh, that was what you said.
And now.
So we, so we're trying to fix that. We want to, we're trying to put in a way to know.
You can go up and see if there's a left of all gone to.
Well, and this is something I brought up. Clayton and I were just talking. It's interesting. So like, there aren't franchises. We don't have franchises with any companies in, in the county. I think this is where towers is just an interesting topic because really anyone can come in and get a tower, anyone. But it does seem like if someone's going to put in a giant tower, don't we want to know that the person is like dedicated to the business and that like, I think having some accountability towards the tower, right?
Which, which is an argument for what?
I'm just saying more like to have that long-term accountability because there isn't a franchise agreement where it's like franchise agreements, there are more, there, there are contracts with franchise agreements where it's like there is not a contract.
But what would that mean as far as these questions are concerned?
I think that's, I'm just justifying more of like why we, I think having these things makes sense.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that makes sense. But I was, I was just thinking that it's going to be in their interest to tell us that all of their towers are active because they're not going to want to do anything with them. So like, it's like, all my towers are active and then oops, I'm out of business. Actually, none of them are active and I've abandoned them or something. That's like probably, so maybe to that point, you know, they might not tell us the truth about whether they're active or interactive. But probably they have to with FCC. So there is some FCC, that's like, that would be a really.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the FCC does monitor it.
Yeah.
So they, because they're monitoring bandwidths and actual spectrum usage on each tower and by and by that, so.
Mason.
So we don't need to.
We can check them.
If that's a report.
But could we have them just file the report with us rather than us having to do it? I mean,
Right, good.
I feel like it'd be much better for us to not have to do it ourselves.
Well, let's find out what that report is and find out what, what they're doing.
Okay.
Do you think, do you think the service commission? It does that?
You know, I, I don't know.
I know, or if we could just get them all at one time, yeah. We just got them all at one time. Maybe that would be easier than having to make it be per tower. Right.
Let's just put a note to figure out who's, who's checking it. Because I think that tower down on the Mesa is not active. That big one, the dual one that goes up.
Oh.
I don't think that's currently active.
I think the original Kismet Tower is not active either.
The original one.
The original one is not.
Oh, it's not because during, it got burned over. They put up that new tower.
Right, so, but it's still standing there.
There, that's such like.
I think that's the county, actually.
Yeah, I think it is the county.
What?
Your boss, your bosses.
I don't have that in my budget to take care of that.
I mean, my budget.
I like who want to do it as a group.
Okay.
So we're going to tell everyone else what we have to do.
The county doesn't have to follow their own.
All right.
Somebody ought to make a complaint.
Okay, the last.
Somebody ought to make a complaint.
Should inspection costs be borne by the county or billed to the permit holder?
What inspection costs?
What inspection costs?
We have in here about inspections. That's why the question is on here is more.
Oh.
Yes, maybe Nolan void if, if we get that from the FCC.
But this is about the physical inspection of the.
Yes, the county reserves the right to conduct an inspection of new and existing towers, which I think that's more going out to it, but then it says, um, it just, there's two.
So it's kind of like.
Here about inspections and I more was in thinking, should we be required, like, should maybe, should we be paying to do that inspection?
This is kind of like a septic inspection sort of. I mean, we do that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
We.
But we, we have a, we have a county employee that does that. Correct, so. Who, he is going to inspect towers.
Yeah, I'll go climb on them.
You're like, yep, looks good. Just bang on it. Um, well, but that is, I mean, that does, right, there is maybe some level of expertise that.
To bring.
Right.
To do some of these.
If we had to pay for it, we would not want to pay the county to pay for it. I mean, we do have to pay for your time too.
But then it's also, when does it, when would the county even require, what would trigger requiring an inspection?
I mean, it might be when they put it up that you want to just go see, does it have whatever criteria, the things that are visually obvious and that are part of the criteria. Did they do what they said they were going to do?
Right, like more of a certification that like what kind of inspection? I think that comes down to it also as far as like, it's like versus a structural inspection. That wouldn't be something I can go out and do.
Right, yeah, it's did, did they comply with what, you know, did they put up the fencing they said they were going to?
Is it where it's supposed to be?
Right. Yeah. Is it as tall as they said it was going to be? Can you measure one?
You do subject, what are their inspections? Do we do?
So we don't do any building inspections. The one thing, and I've talked to the assessor's office about this. We, the assessor's office actually goes out and does inspections for open permits every year. They go out in the fall just to check the progress of construction. Um, we talked to them about towers.
That's interesting.
But Jesse.
This is by me that have been half finished.
I don't think. I don't remember what Jesse said and I asked him. But we send them all the building permits so that they know when they can start inspecting. But I, we talked about towers and now I don't remember what he said because I was like, you guys go do these. They literally go and see what's taxable.
I mean, I guess it'd be interesting to know like, what is, again, like people that have figured this out before us, what is best practice? Do they go? Do they go into inspections or is that, is that an unnecessary thing?
Yeah, the Teton County or another regulation to see what they have about inspections.
We could just ask them, the meeting.
Yeah.
Or would you, would you have inspections go out based on? The report you did from the FCC about active or inactive?
Yeah.
And that's how you know the stuff looks inactive.
See if the lights are blinking.
Even like, you know, the assessor, they'll come, basically make sure you don't, that it's all, but that's every.
Six years.
It seems like if it's, if it's a negligible cost and the county just bears it, if it's onerous, then we, we charge the applicant is what I would think.
Yeah, if it's you going and doing site visit. I think just what it is, but if we have the higher party or something.
Do you need more than a site visit though? I mean.
Well, I don't know, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
Done.
So it looks like T-Town County, the applicant shall agree and state that the proposed facility implies all MC regulations. The applicant shall submit a statement by professional engineering license to the city.
And this is after construction? Okay.
I mean, as a rule of thumb in the, in the T-Town County regs, they frequently will charge the applicant to do whatever, bring in experts, analysis, things like that. It's a pretty common.
I think we should definitely be charging people for all the things.
You do.
Higher permit costs, the whole shebang.
Our permits are extremely, extremely cheap and.
Even compared to.
I can, I open the experience from the county wants to do something, the town of Pinedale said, sure, and they put their hand out and we're like, what? And we said, nah, we provide fire.
You provide fire.
We provide fire and police.
For $10.
That didn't work. They still want their money.
Well, I'm, I'm on board with that.
Let's not do that right now. My, that might be too much of a discussion.
So what's the answer to that question?
Seems like if a safety inspection, if there's some sort of safety issue that may, maybe is brought up. But yeah, they should have to pay.
Right, like if we have to call in a specialist to do something, then.
Specialist or something like, it would obviously be, we might need to say that they would have to approve it. Like they would know that it's happening. We wouldn't just do something behind their back.
And then send them a bill. Yeah, right, right.
But I think the T-Town County thing, having something in there about certifying the installation would be. Certifying the.
Yeah, I'm sure they have to provide something to the FCC so they could just. Provide us with completion or whatever.
Okay. I should have been typing these on the list. Maybe I'm writing them and I should have been typing them. No, it's okay. It's okay.
Okay, that gets us through our list of questions. Are there any that we wanted to revisit? Or Chris, is there something more in your general?
I'd be curious, I mean, the, uh, oh. Steve has a question real quick too.
Steve Christensen, in one of the comments that I submitted that was after Haley, after you made this list, was, was the, the town of Pinedale has an indemnity provision? And so I don't know if the county is immune, but you might want to consider adding it in an indemnity provision similar to what the town of Pinedale has.
Okay, thank you.
I forgot.
An indemnity against what?
I'm sorry.
It can't sue the county any damages of by issuance of a permit by the county. Yeah, I'll get you.
Okay. I think it's, it's not. I think it's pro, it's clear in the Government of Plains Act, but certainly belt and suspenders would be an indemnity provision. I see what you're saying. And this is the town of Pinedale.
Steve, I'm sorry, I forgot to put your comments in here. I'll bring yours up right now.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, and so the current draft, they don't have any. That makes sense.
The other ones, I think.
Please stand so.
I'm sorry. No, I've looked at them. Just read your Shell article like a couple of days ago.
Send it to Clay.
Clay was on that.
Was I? I do want to have this conversation because I have opinions.
No.
Oh, I have.
Because the formatting, I was like, I got it and I had already addressed the formatting and I was like, yeah.
So are we, should I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Was curious about in the notes, just going back to the, um. I guess treating private residential or agriculture, well, let's just say private versus commercial differently. I, I, I wonder, and then I didn't quite exactly understand what the note there, if attached to building and follows exempt facility definitions and it's permitted, however, if it's not exempt. Needs to go through the correct process. So we're saying regardless of whether it's commercial or private, that's. That's what we're saying. So how to interpret that?
Yeah, so there was some discussion, if I remember right, on. Towers attached to an existing structure typically for reception for the resident. And there. If they stayed within the height restrictions, then it wouldn't require any sort of additional.
If it's private?
Yeah.
But if it's commercial and it.
Are you talking, are you talking ham radio or are you talking about, like, I'm putting up a tower so I can grab signal that's being sent over by LR? So, yeah, so this was. I think some of the discussion, and I think Lance talked about this a bit, where there's a bunch of these. Yeah, small cells attached to buildings.
Right.
That are, I think, within the height restrictions or within.
Within the height restriction plus where there's that, that little variance of six feet or something that you can go over six feet for certain structures like that.
So they wouldn't have to go through a CUP, is that right?
If you're allowed right now to go over height or antennas or like for use.
Yeah.
Currently, I, I think it's six feet. Yeah. For private.
I mean, I guess, I just would, I mean, my, I think we should treat private different from commercial. Like I would say like private, if it's within the height restrictions or whatever, you said, I agree, like, we should. I don't think that should be a CUP, but if it's a commercial entity, I think that's a different story. I- i- if it's in like a, especially if it's in like a residential zoning district or something.
Yeah, and so. I think I would agree with that. The question. Which might be something that I'd have to ask Lance or somebody like him. I know that when they put up, um, you know, like out in larger or something like that, where there's a lot of terrain. They may put in a receiver for somebody and then, you know, those people allow them to have like a repeater or something like that. Yeah, and so. Does that trigger commercial, commercial use where they would need a CP for each of those? If it's within the height restriction, I guess. The thought was that if it's attached to an existing structure, it's not, you know, a standalone tower, should that be an accepted use or not? Am I getting that right?
That's interesting. I mean, I think the, the way that I was thinking about it was if it's private, it's like, okay, you know, I have my satellite dish, I have my whatever thing. Uh, like that's for, that's, that's an incidental use of my property and it's acceptable. I think it makes sense. It's, it's an incidental use to an approved use within the zoning district. But if it's a commercial entity, that becomes a principal or a primary use, I think. If, if, so I, that's where I think there's an important distinction, like you, in the, in the same zoning district. Same circumstances, but commercial versus private, that the use becomes different and therefore I think we need the. Like a more of a rigorous process, a CUP or whatever the case may be. Whereas maybe if it's within the height restriction and it's me putting up my microwave dish just so I can get better reception to the thing, then maybe you don't need a CUP for that.
We, we did kind of discuss this because. Also, we, wasn't that part of our conversation to whether we should even require a permit for that? And that the answer, I think we all came up with was no.
Is small cell, what does that mean? Sorry.
Be a small cell.
But, so I guess I would draw that just, yeah. Is small cell by, and is it inherently not a commercial endeavor or is small cell always just so I can receive signal as a private user? Yeah.
They're all. Would trigger. Would need a CUP or additional permit if it was within.
Maybe a building permit, it was still going to require the building permit if it's underneath the height requirement. Then it's just the building permit or like a small, not as restrictive process. But I think one thing to keep in mind with these small cells, with the small cells. Wouldn't we rather there be, I mean, and this is a question for you guys more. Would there, would you rather have a big tower or have like three small cells in residential if there's an option? Just something to think about, like if there is the option to have the small cells versus have a 50-foot tower in a residential area.
Yeah, that's a reasonable question. I guess I just want to make the point that the, I would draw the line, if it's commercial, I think it should be a CUP process, even if it's small cell and within the height restrictions and whatever. If it's, if, if it's personal, private use. Then I don't think it needs to be, but.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
I mean. We did discuss it. We did. And that was kind of the home business thing that brought up the home business. Topic, kind of. But this was, the home business thing came up more with LR, I think.
Yeah, well, like the tower out in Jim Bridger or something like that on residential, I think like that clearly is a provider tower. The, the understanding I had was, like, again, using the example of Barger, like repeaters or something where you're extending service. By piggybacking off of a residential service. To me, I don't think that that is a provider tower, you know, if they had like their small cell that was servicing a subdivision or an area. But I, again, I don't know how you would distinguish between that, but I also feel like it's kind of a loophole, like if they're going to put up a home service and they can just put an extra one on there.
I mean, if it's indistinguishable, is it indistinguishable from?
For the most part, yeah, it's like, I mean, they look like these, you know?
And it's just attached to where the, the user already has their dish or whatever.
So they would have the radio pointing at wherever it's coming from to that house, like if that house sits at a higher area and then they could. Point the other one the other way and it's.
That seems like a no harm, no foul sort of thing. If it's indistinguishable from what would be there anyway.
Yeah, but I get the point, like if it's a, you know, if they make a deal with a homeowner, like, hey, I'll give you free internet if you let me. You know, shoot to this whole other half of the subdivision, then you know, that probably needs a CUP because it's a commercial.
And we did have that in Barger Builders, a guy that who had a property that, I can't remember visionary, someone said, this would be a good spot to put a pole, can we do that? And he came in and got the CUP for it.
Yeah.
Is that a separate pole though, or was it attached to a building? Do you remember?
That one was attached to a building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would be fine with, yeah, I think if, if it's commercial, then yes. And if they sneak a few through and you can't tell.
But that repeater thing, I don't know, that doesn't, that seems like a different animal than like.
Does.
Yes, small cell.
We did.
And I think the idea there was that we were trying to promote small cell versus towers where it was. By making them easier, right?
Was it?
The small cell one though, sorry, now I don't know what one you're talking about. Now, did I mess something up?
No, you didn't.
But now the small cell, I think it was. I think we were saying no permit would be required for like small cell for personal use.
They said, yeah, they'll be treated different.
Yeah. Or permit.
As long as you're.
As long as you're within the height requirement and.
That was including standalone, right? Because we were talking, because we were talking about the. Like rant, yeah.
Did it include standalone?
I thought that was the conversation.
And I, you know, one thing Christine and I were talking about today too, is I was curious about just the height of power poles. I was like, this is interesting because look at all the power poles everywhere.
I know you go to.
I'm like.
Tiny and they're just right, that's what I noticed.
It's just interesting that like. Yeah, anyway, just.
Did you grow near Powerland?
I did. You know, Black.
So explain it.
I do. Very, in general.
They grow better than.
Larger.
But yes, commercial needs to go through.
That's what I, that's my proposal. And then, I just wanted, the all zoning districts, we're saying we wanted it, we're going to allow it in all zoning districts. Towers, so this would, should towers be allowed in all zoning districts? And we said, it says yes with alternatives analysis.
So, yeah, there was a. Another, I feel like lengthy discussion with. The outcome. Haley had, was it, I think it was you that brought up the idea of in the application. We have a question about alternative locations and. My thought was like, again, considering the Jim Bridger thing, like. I think it's appropriate to allow for a tower in a residential area, but should there be, like? Is it on a residential lot? Does the lot, is it, I think Barger, isn't it, that one on like the bus parking area? And is that residential still or was it rezoned to something else? So.
Does that, that the county owned that?
The county.
Where that is still.
Yeah, so is there. Something we need to do where it needs to be zoned differently or is it, it's just a more. Um, restrictive CUP in residential. Obviously, I think we would want to promote it in other zoning types, but there are instances where, you know, you might need one in residential or near residential.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't want it popping up in a. Lot that's meant for a house.
Right, right, right. Or, or just willy-nilly, like, I mean, I think the one in Bargerville, that, that guy, like, you know, that was serving the community, everybody there wanted that because it's going to provide better internet service and there was no alternative. So like, that meant, you're like, okay, yeah, that's, that should be there. But, um, I guess, so the, were you going to show something, Haley, sorry?
You're okay, no one can see the screen, so let's not bother. I, I, I think what we, Chris, what we were thinking though, is that. This, I just started drafting this a couple of days ago and I, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. But what I wanted to do was start the permit process of like exempt facilities and what the requirements are. And then if it's a, a micro or a small cell facility, say what the permanent requirements are, plus the requirements above. And then if you're into the small wireless facilities, these are things that you have to provide in addition to.
Right, right.
And then the, so it's kind of like it builds up.
Right.
So the thought was as it gets bigger, then you have to do an alternative analysis of why is this location the best location? Maybe provide a map of showing where your service is within five miles or where it's, we, we can. We can kind of build up the application where, you know, if you're doing a macro facility, you might need to, the requirements are, it's going to require more.
Yeah, that sounds like a good way to do it. And that kind of. And that kind of relates to the, so there was the, there's an overarching comment, which is there's a document that I think you shared with this Clayton that was like kind of. Case studies of things that had, where counties had denied a tower and then they said, oh, you can't do that because it's. And the takeaway that I took from that, there was a couple. One was, you know, there are certain things where the federal laws are going to override whatever you think you should do. But the other takeaway was if you don't have a regulatory basis on which to deny an application. Uh, an example being, uh, well, you know, that really is a lot of the people at the Jim Bridger, well, this is going to be a real eyesore in our community. And we said, you know what? Yeah. We, we think that's true. We're going to deny it because the visual impact, well, there's not, nothing in our regs that say that. And therefore it would be overturned by a judge that says you, or even need, what, in the big penny one, I think they brought in the maps, not the 150 foot one, but the one before that. Showing coverage. And we said, well, yeah, but it looks like that's, they're already sufficiently served. This is not needed and it's going to, there's a bunch of issues with it. They couldn't, they'd say, well, the regs say nothing about whether need is a consideration and therefore it doesn't matter. So that made me think we should, should we, this is a question. You know, include those criteria as part of our decision-making process. So coverage exist, or does it fill an existing need related to coverage? We should put in there something about, is it aesthetically? Um, you know, does it negatively impact view sheds and blah, blah, blah? It, it, and those are really the two big ones that I thought, uh, that we don't have, but if we did that, it would mean putting in it as criteria, having it in the application, having it in our findings. But do we want to use those as, I mean, I, I do, do we want to use them though, as like criteria to make decisions? About these applications. And again, if it's in a CUP, you don't have, you don't have to always. If it's in a residential neighborhood, they've got plenty of coverage and it's a big eyesore. That's one circumstance. If it's in a residential neighborhood, there's no coverage. And it's pretty modest impact where everybody in the community says, yeah, this is great. We'd rather have the eyesore than, and service. That's a different circumstance.
I think I thought CUP addressed our community need or is that zone?
It's so broad. No, CUP, uh, CUP is a special need met. But I think that, again, just because I'd rather be, you know, if this got taken in front of a judge, I'd rather be clear, more clear than less.
I think too, the way I envision this is that all the requirements of the CUP would be listed in here. And not necessarily having to go back to that broad CUP application. That was my thought process is that it's more specific to towers. Our CUP application is very broad. Um, so, but I, I, we had something in here. We did talk about, this came up in several conversations about the quantitative benefits. And it's like to show that quantitative, something quantitative. I don't know how you.
You just have to understand what that is.
Yeah.
But to, to your point, I, I, I do like the view shed piece and we have discussed that prior. But the, the one thing I really have a hard time with is the gap in service. If there's already service being provided. What if someone could come in and do it cheaper?
Or, or they have significantly faster speeds. Right.
You're saying that he. Need to have that information?
I think that would be helpful information. I mean, that would help us make a decision. I mean, and then we came up with that with Lance's, right? He says, well, I mean, it's going to be way faster than the stuff that's there. That's a reasonable consideration, but I think every circumstance has its own, it's a different painted picture, right? And so I think. That's helpful stuff to know.
Just kind of show up in the CUP though.
How so?
Well, I'm thinking like, for instance, okay, going back to the big tiny one. They had 3G and they were going to do 4G, 4G LTE, which when I inquired technician, that really wasn't that much. So that showed up. Any, I mean, they're saying what they want. I mean, those, you see the need, well, they're really fighting much more of a need. What about 5G? Well, that would require different. You know, different equipment and we're, we're not interested in that right yet. We're just in, so that showed up and as they, you know, gave their. Description, their CUP, it seems to me like, um, I mean, I just think we can nitpick every little thing. And I'm thinking some of this may show up as they fill out their application anyways.
But it, but we have no basis on which to approve or deny something if we don't have. Like the, uh. Criteria and.
If it's not a decision, it's not a decision point. Yeah. Like Chris saying, we can't say, well, because this didn't happen. We can't do it. It, it is interesting because the way the commissioner uses the word special need, whether a special need will be met is something to be considered. And I think, but at the same time, this will be something that I'll need to really bird dog on the FCC side to see if we even can. Cause then we're essentially. In a place where we're making a decision on whether or not this organization needs to, to put this here or not. I. I'll look into it because it is an interesting question.
Well, I just, in the document that you shared with us, that the takeaway on the unmet need thing was they got the judge overruled it because it wasn't criteria in the regulations. It didn't say because the FCC says they can't say.
I think that was in the example regulations, but was that in the FCC example? Oh, that was the.
There was some article that was written that had.
Didn't it? LRS.
It'll, I think it definitely needs some, it needs some research on it.
Does. I mean, there's a lot of this that I think FCC requirements are going to. Be a big part of this from the sounds of, at least from talking with the, the people from Melissa and Andrew, they were like, you'll be surprised how much FCC. Regulates.
Yeah. Well, in that case, I mean.
Brought up. They were like, you even, they even brought up something about the private or commercial mattering and not mattering. And I.
Totally wasting our time.
I was like, I don't, I was like, we need to look into this. Like, it's kind of one of those.
Well, that's why we have those, like, we have those sample municipal rules that the FCC drafted themselves and give, and gives, that was another resource we have.
Yeah.
Um. I don't think we're wasting our time. I think it's very educational, but I do think we, I mean, we'll have a. A lot more questions and a better understanding of all this whenever we do meet with them. Yeah. But I'm also open to like, if you guys, you know, if we get to a point where we want to, I'm, I'm not going to be upset if we don't go until mine. I'll leave that up to you guys.
And the other thing is, I feel like, I, I think that we have good guidance to be working on a regulation. I, I, I have been working on it a little bit, but I just didn't feel like it was ready to share and it was going to confuse the conversation tonight. But if, I will, I will confuse the conversation. Um, but if we felt like we could get something together, at least to have a starting point to actually, and then maybe start looking at the, at the FCC regulations. At the same time.
Would you share with me?
I, it's actually in the OneDrive folder. It is in there.
Be here.
I just started this yesterday, but it's more, there's a, like, there was a comment review input from Wyoming Game and Fish. So I put that in there. You know, just little things that I'm trying to get organized. Um. But the next meeting isn't until December 18th. Do we want to just hold off until the next meeting? Because that will give Clayton and I a little bit more time to get something together. Rather than having another workshop, because the problem is we do have to have the agenda published ahead of time.
Then that's the one that they're coming to?
That's the one they're coming to.
Yeah.
I, I think it would give us a little bit more time just to get something together and because we have to publish the agenda a week in advance. So there's, it just doesn't give us much time to work anything.
Tammy, things you want Tammy to work on?
Yes. Come into my office. I will get you to.
Bunch of envelopes to mail.
Is there things she can work on while she's hanging out with her cats?
Tammy, I think, you know, if you want to go through some of this Teton County regulation and just see if there are certain things with the, that might fit in to. And I, oh, I might take a look at it too, but maybe that would fit into certain places in here. So.
Yeah, I'll come in.
Or if you want to, if you want to come into the office and we can work on it at some point, but I, I think maybe during the next month, we just.
No, I.
Work on it more internally, like in, incorporate these comments in.
Well, I guess I'd be curious to know, just to put, close the loop on that about whether we as a board agree or not about putting something in around like. A service demonstration of a service need and coverage gap, uh, and something around view, view shed sort of things.
I think I would, um. I think that the. The service one is, I feel like an easy one. I don't think it has to be a requirement. I think, you know, if it is in a place where it makes sense, like I think competition's good. It gets us better prices, better service. So it doesn't need to be that there's a gap in coverage or something. So I don't, wouldn't want that to. Have to be a requirement, but a consideration that makes sense. The view shed one, I don't. I struggle with that and a lot of, or maybe not a lot, but like some of our regulations where it's. Um, I guess subjective, you know, where.
Whatever you build is going to be at somebody's.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, I mean, you deal with that and anytime somebody builds a house, somebody is upset about it because it changed. Whether it's in their way or not, it's something else that they have to look at. And so. I guess I worry about having something like that. I don't know.
Can, can it be written though that we did it? Something we, we need. And if we do, I mean, we don't, the word is the.
Enter in shall versus must. From Stephen Iger, coffee.
Can I come to that? Cause I don't want to participate in.
Yeah, that seems right down your alley. Yeah.
If you record it, it can be like a podcast.
Yeah.
You can put it on video.
I'll do that.
Just a radio show about it.
Nobody's going to want to buy advertising for that thing.
Well, because I, I would really like to have something solid. If we decide to devise something, it's going to be. I'm not saying we have to do it on every application. I'm just saying.
Yeah. But how do you determine that? I mean, if, if you think all towers are ugly, then how do you decide which one isn't affecting somebody's view and which one is?
We talked about that with the distance to 191 last week. How do you, because it does have to be objective. What does that look like? And the reality is, is that. Like we discussed this a little bit last time. That very nature of a tower is putting itself in a place where it can reach the most people, which is can be on the highest point, which is what everybody sees. So we say, like, I. I just think it's really a difficult, I don't know, it's tough. And I don't know, I also don't know that. Some of those things would pass FCC muster either.
So do we, I can't remember. Do we have something in here already about like stealth design or something or like something like that?
I felt we, we talked about that as well. Um.
There, there, I think we found that there is like industry standards. Or not standards, but industry speak.
From a, from a.
Yeah. Um, and that we can. Encourage it, I guess. I don't know what we decided on requirement.
Yeah, we, some really mouth language that doesn't actually mean anything.
Yeah.
I know. I feel like we, that was one that we, I think we were going to come back to that too.
I don't think it's worthless.
Aren't we coming back to this?
That is one I circled to. Yeah, that's three bullet point.
Yeah. I would really like it.
Need to come back to. Yes. I think the stealth design, it was not. One of the comments was we could include it to have authority to require it, but it might not be needed for every situation.
Right.
But we'd have to actually have that. In there.
Wording in there is to address it.
Yeah.
One thing I wanted to bring up, not to change, but that, so since we're in section three, the very first bullet point seems like an easy one. Our current height thresholds, 40 feet, but then we decide that was just supposed to be 35 feet.
Yeah, I think that was 35.
If we be, are they appropriate? I, I, I circled one one. We hadn't really answered that. I think we all have, yes. Be one we could maybe answer.
And I think the height threshold really is just if. Where do you draw from needing? A normal permit to a, or a building permit to a CUP or.
But that's just kind of a general, you know, that's the basis.
That's.
Height requirement.
Yes.
Now, are we okay with that basis and.
Right.
There, are we okay? Cause that plays entire code.
Right.
Seems like that's been effective so far.
We've had one complaint. And there's one person that wanted us to change the height. So there's only one per, I mean, we've only, in the time I've been on the board, it's one person out of Daniel or something.
That wanted it to be less.
Wanted their house to be higher in the height restriction, but.
Oh, the height restriction on the house?
Yeah. But otherwise, yeah, it seems to have always have worked.
Yeah.
Well, that came into it too. Yeah. Yep.
Keep trying to sue. And I said, bring it. Said, come at me, bro.
So probably yes on that.
I think they're fine.
You know, with the, with the amendment 45.
Yeah. I, okay. So one thing I just want to mention though, like this is good. These are good guidelines, but Chris, to your point about like. Oh, the coverage maps and things I, I, when I started drafting this, I did put some things in here. That are addressing what we're talking about, but maybe it might seem overboard to some people or not enough, but I just thought it would be a good starting point. So I'm like, I am like very open to criticism, obviously, but please know, I'm not trying to like direct anything one way or the other. I'm just putting something in.
Got to start somewhere.
I just want to start a starting point. That's all. So please know when you're, when I share this, that I'm not trying to like.
Yeah. It makes it concrete. It's good.
I mean, it was. Kind of suggested. No, definitely wasn't. All right. Um. We'll call it there. We're meeting the 18th here, six o'clock. And we'll have YO pass.
Yes.
Cool. Great. Okay.
There's no applications. No.
There can't be now.
Not be no motions.
Okay. We'll adjourn at eight 49.
Woo.
Look at that.
That was your goal, right?
Oh, I'd just like to really thank Haley for all.
Don't even.
Ran for 11 minutes about how great Haley.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank.
Clayton, teacher, showing up and offering his expertise.